February ninth, two thousand twelve. Going around the room, I'd like to interest the staff and member of the board. Brian?
I'm Brian Rose, I'm the Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Phil Devance is office.
Steve Dutton, alternate.
John Heiko.
Gail Abrek, Recording Secretary.
Alan Jaten, Chair.
Simone Bingham, alternate.
Carlos Adams.
Tim Redmond, Vice Chair.
Carl Foley, alternate.
Welcome. Um, I'm gonna skip, uh... Can I go right into old business, or am I gonna wait for fifteen minutes?
Mr. Chairman?
You need to wait.
Yes.
I respectfully request that we have a time to read this eight or nine pages of paper we were just handed at three minutes of the hour if we're gonna discuss things tonight.
Reference, uh...
We have a handout that was on the table that was four sections, and another handout that Brian gave us, another four or five pages, and if we're gonna discuss this stuff, I suggest the board has five minutes here to look it over before we begin.
Mr. Chair, I can explain what the one that I just handed out to everyone that wasn't sitting on the table.
I prefer to read it, Brian.
Okay. I'm going to, uh, continue on. Board members can be reading it as we move along with some of the simple business matters. I'd like to take up the minutes of January's twenty-sixth, two thousand twelve. Copies were mailed. Any additions, corrections, omissions, or corrections? Members of the board? Seeing none, I'll take a motion for approval of the minutes.
So move.
Second?
Motion by Phil, seconded by Tim. Carlos, need to be looking up. Any comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Who's the voting alternate? We've got three alternates and only two missing board members.
I'll just sit in.
Any meeting, many mo, round the table, Steve first, Simone second, Carl third. Um, I'll go the other way next time, but you'll still be in the middle somewhere. Okay. Calling for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Ah, yes, okay. Uh, Chair votes yes. Now, these handouts that you gave us this evening, do they concern the first items on our agenda this evening, or is it just the last item? I believe it's the last item, right?
They concern the last item on the agenda.
Okay, alright. What I suggest is that we take care of the school issues first, and we'll allow some time between those two for the board members to read this correspondence and maybe bring themselves up to speed in preparation for the last item on the list. Seeing that, we'll go into old business. If someone says seven fifteen, I ask that the seven fifteen be removed to seven o'clock from now on, so we don't have to be held up to seventeen, to seven fifteen by rules. Okay, first item on our agenda on old business, map seventeen, lot one eighty-two, site plan review hearing for a proposed addition to the existing Bartlett Elementary School building, along with associated onsite improvements. Town of Goffstown, Goffstown School District owners, six eighty-nine, Mast Road Zone Commercial continued from December eighth, two thousand eleven. Brian, you have the floor.
Mr. Chair and members of the board, since our last meeting with the school, um, they... we invited them to come to a TRC meeting, uh, we provided them the comments from each of the departments. We, uh, they tried to address some of those comments, and we also met with them at the school district, uh, they have a board building committee, and, um, so we met and we discussed some of our comments with them and with the applicant. They have revised their plans and wanted to come back and present their revisions to the planning board, uh, and to show what they had done to address the town's concerns to the best of their ability.
Thank you, Brian. You have the floor.
Thank you. Nicole Duquette from TF Moran and Fred Metazuski from CMK Architects. Um, I'm just gonna go up to the board, it's a little easier for me to point out, instead of going through the whole process, uh, project again, just gonna go over the revisions, so I don't bore you to death here, so, um, in talking to Brian and Megan, uh, we did do a couple of revisions here, one of which being the connection, uh, connecting roof drains and, uh, to a new catch basin located on top of the thirty, existing thirty-six inch RSP, RCP. So that's, um, that was one of the changes. The other changes, change, um, I know Brian was concerned and a couple of the board members were concerned with the amount of parking that's at Bartlett. We're very tight on room, but we did manage to add, uh, two spaces here, two parallel spaces within the loading dock, there's enough room for a truck to pull up to the loading dock, and two parallel spaces here, and we added an additional three spaces in the back of the building. So that's in addition to five spaces, which is better than, than nothing. Another comment that the DPW had, um, was, and the sewer commission, uh, was this, the grease, uh, grease trap for the school. We are adding a grease trap where we didn't have one before, there's gonna be one in the kitchen, and then there's gonna be an exterior one. Uh, it's gonna be a two thousand gallon grease trap, and, uh, we are working with the, um, sewer department, Mike Yerko, right now, uh, on, on the details of the sewer tie-in. Another thing that we're trying to figure out right now, and Megan will probably bring up a little later, is the work within Mast Road. Mast Road is planning to be repaved, uh, come the spring, so, um, we're, we're trying to see if it's feasible for us to phase this, we're not quite sure if it's gonna go that way right now, but we're trying to look into phasing it, um, to see if it's feasible to do some of this work first prior to Mast Road being redone. But we won't know that until, um, after our decision is made in, in March, correct? But, other than that, um, erosion control was added, silt socks were added to the plan. The driveway, this doesn't, yes, it does. Uh, one of the revisions that we took it upon ourselves to do is shorten this driveway, the loading dock too. There is a utility pool that we didn't wanna move that's located here, so we did shift this driveway over, so we do have more green space now than we did on the previous plan. And the last thing I wanna mention too is, there was some concern about this depressed area and where that water would go. We do have, it would overflow and run to the catch basin up here, um, but we did create another low spot within the driveway, just in case snow blocks it, or, um, it just adds another way for the water to get out. So we have a catch, we do, we did add a catch basin and tied that into the drainage system as well. And I believe that is it for this plan. Do you want me to stop and...
Well, I ask if the Megan and Brian have any unresolved issues or anything that you wanna bring before the, the board that, uh, that would maybe elicit some comments that we'd like to continue to make at the end of this session on, on the Bartlett School.
Uh, the only comments I would have that I had mentioned before, which I don't think really can be resolved tonight, is that, um, we would be looking for the school district to try and budget or plan for some nighttime snow removal, since there's such an issue with snow piling up and no effort to go over there. Uh, and then the other item that Nicole just mentioned, um, that's a big deal for us is, um, we're paving that road this summer, and I'd really like to see any work that they need to do out in Mast Road done, um, if there's any way to do it, because the road will be under moratorium, and the town's requirement, once it's under moratorium, is that we'll have to overlay the road one hundred feet total, full width, curb to curb, which is very costly. So I just wanna state that again for the record.
Okay, yes.
Is there a fixed schedule on the repaving?
There's not a fixed schedule right now, we're looking at summer to allow time for a few things, such as possibly your work, family dollar, some sidewalk tip downs that need to be done as part of our sidewalk project. Um, it'll allow us time to adjust the catch basins and whatnot. We're also looking to do the Mast Road paving during the optimum time of the year, which would be summer, best weather conditions. Uh, we're gonna have one shot at getting it done and doing it right, so, um, we'd like to, you know, plus we're also working with the contractor, um, to determine, uh, an agreement on, on cost for the, for the overlay. So right now, I would say summer is our plan. Originally, we were thinking spring, but we have to work things out with the contractor, and, um, weather-wise, I think we'll wait till summer to get it all done.
Brian, did you have anything?
Uh, the only question that I had remaining was, um, did you have the, um, any discussions regarding the, the drop-off zone in the front, and whether or not that would be allowed as possible temporary parking during the day, or did you, um, wanna just kind of treat those extra parking spots as enough to cover what, what the school will need, or what happened there?
My concern with that is, one, um, there's not enough width to do parallel spa, uh, parking spaces, and, um, the required drive aisle, we're, we're missing, I think, two or three feet in that. So that's, that's one, and two, um, the more signage you, you add for temporary parking and, um, like, parking between these hours, the more likely people are just gonna park there, instead of, you know, adhering to the, the drop-off requirements. And where Mast Road gets awfully blocked up during, um, during the school drop-off and pickups, I'd, I'd be worried that people just would park there if we added signage saying, you know, we can park, people can park there between these hours.
From experience at Maple Avenue, they start showing up a half hour before school gets out, and park at the start of the line, so the lanes are full long before school gets out every day.
Effectively parking.
Effectively parking, but that's the nature of things.
I mean, during school events, you know, the superintendent or the principal or whoever is holding the school event can give allowance to park there, um, and that shouldn't be an issue, but, um...
I don't think so either. Members of the board, have any questions? Just going around, Phil?
Just a follow-up on, you mentioned the drainage on the front.
Yes.
You mentioned, uh, existing catch basin that was to the left. Is that in this road, is that...
Yes, that's within Mast Road. And then we're adding one in our driveway connecting to Mast Road drainage.
Thank you.
Yes, Brian?
Sorry, I just actually wanted to mention one other change that I don't know that you mentioned was, um, there used to be a landscape island on the side of the school, and due to the request from the DPW for plowing purposes, they removed that so that they could do one straight shot through the, through the parking lot without having to veer around that landscape island, so that one landscape island was removed, but I think for good cause.
Thank you.
Steve?
All set.
Tom?
You guys, um, all of this looks like it's very well-prepared, but all of this is also contingent upon the, uh, Warren article, uh, on the, on the town, on the town ballot?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
School district.
School district ballot, yeah.
Voting day.
Yeah.
Simone?
Nothing.
Carlos? Tim?
Megan, you asked that the, uh, school district budget for snow removal, in case it gets too much snow there, was that a correct statement?
Yes.
But the town plows the lots for the school, so the town is ultimately gonna be the one to end up with the problem taking the snow away, right?
Yes, I believe the town's doing it now, it was just mentioned to me that it always seems to be an emergency situation, the snow removal, and we have to stop other things that we're doing, go over there to remove it, whereas if they kinda plan ahead and budget for nighttime, then we could call the guys in to come and plow and remove snow at night over there.
So that, you're saying that, you're requesting the school district reimburse the town for costs for the highway department to be down there to do the work?
Um, I, I mean, that's the way it was stated to me, is that there is no budget right now to pay for us to come in at night.
Well, I'd like to make sure that's very clear, that if the town, is expected to send the highway department down there at night to do that work on overtime, that the school would bear the cost of that and reimburse the town for it.
Carl?
Uh...
Okay. Um, any, any members of public out here wishing to speak in reference this proposed project? I notice there's members of the board, I notice there's probably looks up some private citizens out there, anybody wishing to say, have a comment? You certainly can.
My name's Keith, I'm a member of the Goffstown School Board, and I just wanted to comment on, I believe it's Megan, right? Uh, her comment about...
Can you come up to the mic?
About their not paying budgeted money in the, for snow plow removal at Bartlett School. Well, there's been a gentleman's agreement between the school and the town, where we provide services to the town and we don't charge, and the town doesn't charge us. For example, you use the building for elections, you use it for town sports, you use it for various other meetings and community, um, needs in the community. I, I guess I'm a little shocked to hear that all of a sudden you're expecting us now to absorb another cost, where we don't charge you for anything, now you wanna start charging us. And I, I think it's a slippery slope that we start to go down, and I ask that you respectfully really consider whether that's the slope we wanna go at, pinning the two districts in town, the town side and the school side against each other on who's gonna pay for what, and how are we gonna get reimbursed. Ultimately, it all comes from the same tax base, so I respectfully ask you to consider that.
Thank you. Anybody else have a comment? Wish to speak in reference this proposal? Thank you, hearing no, hearing no further comments. Members of the board, um, in looking at the comments made, um, that still, um, and they save to provide them with, uh, our thoughts in, in whatever reference the project, uh, we've reviewed the changes, and everybody seems to be okay with those. The repaving of Mast Road, Silby seems to be scheduling and ongoing, it'll happen, no matter what. Hopefully, yours will be first and theirs will be last when it comes to the paving. If not, I don't know what the alternative solution might be, but I would believe that would be between the school district and DPW to solve that problem, not us. And in terms of snow removal by the town, I think that's an internal matter also, that's my, my opinion, it may not be the board's opinion. And in terms of the drop-off zone as a temporary parking, I would not recommend anything like that. And if we wanna give that to 'em in written, that would be the only written comments I see that have come forth before the board this evening in reference this project. Yes, Fred?
Um, the committee had asked me to, um, offer a, a budget proposal on making the connections at Mast Road prior to the work, uh, within the street, so the committee, the board, has that budget estimate, um, should they choose to make the expenditure with or without the passage of the Warren article. I think it's still in discussion.
Okay. And I think that would be, I mean, fruitful if that could happen. So seeing that, is the, is the board of any consensus opinion, just going around the room? Are there any other items we wish to add to that? Because Brian's gonna prepare this memo to the school district based upon these comments and what he's heard this evening. Yes, Phil?
One, it may have been addressed the last time that you were here, I'm not sure, but as far as drainage in the back, is there anything that's been addressed in the back for additional drainage? I think you may have mentioned.
Not for, well, other than addition of a catch basin, um, back here, there, there isn't anything else that we're doing back there. I mean, we're, we're not changing the impervious area on this site, uh, the existing drainage, there's a thirty-six inch culvert, and a lot of the water from the area goes through this culvert and onto the brook. Uh, and actually, this isn't a brook, sorry, this is a swell, it's not on the SGS mound. So, the only thing we've done is added roof drains and the foundation drains, and added a new catch basin on top of the existing RCP line back there.
But the roof drains are tied into that?
They were there, they were tied in previously, we're just cleaning it up a little bit.
Yeah, the roof drains from the school, plus the drainage from the street, um, at College Drive, and all that comes down through this brook.
Yeah, well, I was just asking, 'cause in case there was any, any puddling or flooding on the back, if there was anything being addressed to it, that's all.
Members of the board, is that it in terms of comments? I'm assuming you can draft the proper response, Brian? Leave it up to staff to, to, uh, send comments back to the, uh, school district and the building committee, reference this proposed, uh, limited expansion. Moving on, uh, to our next item, which is map four, lot one oh three, site plan review hearing for a proposed addition to the existing Maple Avenue Elementary School, along with associated onsite improvements. Town of Goffstown, Goffstown School District owners, sixteen Maple Avenue, Zone Residential One, and it's continued from December eighth, two thousand eleven. Brian, is there anything you wanna add before?
No.
All right, the presentation, you have the floor.
Okay. Um, Maple Ave, we did do, uh, a little bit more revisions on Maple Ave. A lot of concerns were brought up, both by the butters, board members, and DPW, um, regarding the drainage on this site. As you recall, the existing drainage was just a series of catch basins, uh, and that went one into, straight into the brook, this area went, went straight into the brook, and then this other area went into a drainage swell, that, the, uh, end of which the pipe was buried, so, um, the other problem that the school was having was the amount of sand that was coming off of their playground and into the drainage system, so that's, that always clogging up the drainage system. Uh, there was a lot of concern that there wasn't any treatment provided before this, this runoff water went into the brook, so we did look into that, we analyzed it a little bit more, um, and we put all new catch basins, proposed all new catch basins, so all the old catch basins will be removed and replaced with new catch basins. Uh, we removed this line that went straight to the brook, so that's no longer, longer directly tied into the brook, and we provided a water quality unit for treatment, for pre-treatment of the stormwater, where no treatment was provided before. The other thing we did is, we did regrade, regrade this area, so now most of the playground is, um, sheeting within itself. It's all sand, there's no puddling issues in that area, it is more of a, um, erosion issue with the sand going into the parking lot, so now the sand is going, is, is sloped in towards itself so that, um, we don't have that issue. Where it could be an issue, we have, um, planted a buffer, and that was there before, a buffer of, uh, junipers, uh, to prevent the sand from coming onto the pavement as much as possible. Uh, the other thing that we've done is, this plan doesn't really show it all that much, but the DPW had requested that we clear, uh, some brush from along this property line so that this, this site has adequate snow, um, storage area. So this, clearing the brush and, uh, and other, and limbs and everything in there, and the saplings, would provide them enough snow storage for the area. Another thing that we did was added a sidewalk, added a, sorry, a landscaped island separating the sidewalk and the parking lot. Uh, before, the, the pavement just went right up to the sidewalk, so there was no delineation between the sidewalk and the parking. So we did add an island, and the other thing we did is we removed a portion of the existing island so that when the plow trucks, when the, the, uh, town comes in to plow this, they can just take the snow and go directly across, instead of navigating around the, the, um, landscaped island. Another thing we've done is removed the landscaped island here for the same reason, for the, uh, to make it easier for the snow plows. And, uh, at request, I think, Brian, this is one of your comments, uh, Ryan was concerned with the safety of the sidewalk here, where it is, uh, flush with the pavement there, that's how it does exist today, but we have added extra bollards to protect this a little bit more, so this now will be all protected with bollards. Uh, the sidewalk is still flush, uh, because we need to do that for, for grading and drainage purposes, so those bollards were added there. I think that's about it for this site. We are still, I know that Megan was, I guess there's a lot of water, this is a wet area, so we, we are looking at adding an underdrain up there at Megan's request, so, um, that's one thing that isn't shown on the plans, but we will be making that revision too.
Okay, thank you. Megan, do you have any additional concerns or considerations you wanna...
I just had a quick question, um, can you just, um, I just wanted to direct this reach in a whole, like, the saw cutting out on Maple Ave, I'm just trying to remember what that's for, is there new curving that's being installed along the island that requires saw cutting? And I ask because I believe Maple Ave is on our list to be, uh, repaved also, believe it not.
You're in trouble, aren't you?
Well, I mean, it's possible there that we could change the limit and stay above it if we had to. I think, I, I'll have to look at it a little bit more, but I think we can change it, we can pull the, the saw cut back. The facilities that go out there, that's why I'm trying to remember if there's curving that's being extended, or what that was for. I think it was just because we didn't wanna leave the small section of existing pavement figured we had it all done. But I can look at that a little bit. Um, and then, I was happy to see that all the drainage, you know, out in the back has, is being proposed to be replaced, um, and the water quality treatment unit. One comment that applies to both sites that, um, is, um, storage, there's really no storage, onsite storage of water for a site that has a lot of impervious area. Now, uh, they're not increasing the impervious area, I believe they're pretty much keeping it the same at both sites, so they're not increasing it, but there are areas that have never had any kind of storage of water really, and they still don't at this point either, so that's just something, you know, to think about, um, but obviously, budget-wise, that was something they, you know, they were able to replace all the drainage, which to me was an important, very important, because it was a failing system. So at least we'll get the system functioning, um, if they could put some underground storage, that would be great also. The new system, the, um, water quality unit that they're proposing, I just wanna make sure that the school's aware of whatever maintenance is required with that, there's usually a specific maintenance that is involved with those systems, so I just wanna make sure some type of maintenance manual is passed on to the school for that system, so they know how to take care of that. And then, the same snow removal comment applies there too, and again, that's obviously between the school district and Carl to talk about that more, but I just wanted to mention that again. And I think that's it, so, all of the other things have been addressed.
Brian, do you, have you noted any other than those three items about water storage maintenance and snow removal?
I'm all set, other than what she's mentioned.
Going around the room, Phil, you have any questions?
Just, um, the parking, northern, looking at the, at the site plan and the top parking area, uh, has that ten-foot distance from the brook been changed, or does that still exist?
That still exists, uh, I mean, I don't think it's ten feet, though.
It was twenty.
Yeah, it's, it's about twenty feet, but it hasn't, it hasn't changed from last time, it's about twenty feet.
I think it was the driveway around the corner of the building that was the closest to the brook, Phil.
There, there was one point it was very, very close.
Yeah, it was the corner of the driveway going around it, once the parking was actually a little bit further away from the brook.
I can see it coexisting.
Correct, because this is the, the tightest part right here, and that's the part we're not changing.
Steve?
I don't have any questions.
John?
All set.
All set.
Carlos?
What type of water quality treatment unit is it?
ADS water quality unit.
And so there's an inspection and maintenance schedule, and who's gonna be responsible for seeing, so that's the town, DPW?
The school, I believe, would be.
I'm sorry?
Would the school be responsible for the maintenance of the drainage?
I would say so. We'll, uh, ensure that they have operation and maintenance manuals.
Okay, well, that's the concern.
I think we're gonna go to the property maintenance program that they have there at the school system.
As long as it's clearly identified, so we know, you know, the maintenance schedule and who's responsible for maintaining it.
That, that'll be one of the comments that Brian will add. That, that'll be one of the comments that Brian will add to it. Tim?
What's that?
Carl?
What's that?
Any member of the public wishing to speak in reference to proposals for additions and renovations at Maple Avenue School? Seeing none, wish to thank you for spending the time with us this evening. Brian will also send a correspondence listing those three items of, about the water storage and maintenance of the water quality system and the snow removal task.
Thank you.
Again. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to give the past presenter to have a chance to pick up. And the board members, if you can please read the correspondence relative to our next application. While you're doing that, just taking care of another little piece of, I see a piece of correspondence here about, I'm going to butcher the name, but I'm just going to call it Alfred's Barber Shop. I can't pronounce the last name, and I don't want to butcher it, so I will keep quiet. Brian, can you explain to us, is there anything here that we need to be aware of, or?
Not necessarily, it's a new business, it's coming into Main Street at thirty-two Main Street. The, the cigar shop that had come in just recently to town is actually moving across the street. And this barber shop wants to come and fill that space. My determination letter details that it was not a change of use, and that they would be allowed to go there, and that they still had to just comply with any other site plan, I'm sorry, sign regulations and possible building and fire codes that, that might apply to them going in there, so. Other than that, it was a determination I made for a non-site plan requirement.
So, it's strictly a staff and administrative concern, consideration in working with the applicant. Is the board okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Could get that space to refill as quickly as they did.
Yep, okay. I noticed there was another piece of wild correspondence in the, what I got this evening from Attorney Cronin. What's this about, Brian?
Well, I received this letter yesterday, and Mr. James Alger, who owns one-twenty Violet Street, is concerned about the effects of the lighting from the St. Ace's football field that was recently installed last year. He has hired Attorney Cronin to represent him on this. And so I, I received this letter basically requesting that we go out and assess whether or not they are following what was approved on their, on their plans by the planning board. So I wanted to make the board aware of the fact that I will be going out and assessing that. And if need be, I'll bring it, I, I may, I may include Megan in, in my assessment of what they're doing. But if need be, I may bring it back to the board and, and try to determine whether or not the board needs to revisit what, what they approved previously for their plans, so.
I, I thought that set of plans had a lighting density plan associated with it.
It, it did, and I'm, I'm just letting you know, I, I'll have to go out and take a look at what's, what the concerns are, and whether or not they're following that, that plan that they submit.
Well, you can see a light bulb from miles away, and whether it's impacting you is another story. But thank you. Uh, Tim?
In regards to that subject, we received engineered plans for that project, correct?
Yes.
So would we not ask the engineer to certify to this planning board that the plans were installed within the parameters set forth by him and his engineering firm as represented to this board?
That could very well be.
I think that'd be a better approach than you going out there with Megan, because you can't tell what the, what the angle of the lights are, what the voltage, or the wattage, or any of those, or even the numbers. I think if it was represented to us on a plan that they were going to meet the criteria, I think the engineer needs to come, come forward with a statement that his plan has been met, and that the.
Well, I, I don't know that the angle, I don't know that the.
I would say we require as-built to make sure that the plan is installed correctly. So I don't think this is much different from an as-built plan, certifying that it was installed in accordance with the plans that were presented to the planning board.
And I don't know that that's the only concern. They, they also raised up, you know, issues about the landscape buffer, and whether or not St. Ace's should be required to put on their own property an amount of landscaping to create a buffer.
Well, I don't think you can create a buffer to stop those lights. You can see them, you can see them from Bedford.
We approved the plan as presented.
That's correct.
Period. I would certainly send a letter in, in consensus with the board to the submitting engineer for the applicant, and I'll, and copying this letter to them, and asking for a written response for them, and some kind of certification that.
The lighting, lighting was installed in accordance with the plan?
That kind of puts it back into the applicant's ballpark. And if there still is, persists to be a problem, and it is a problem, and obviously, we have some obligation to, to see if we can rectify the problem, if there is one that exists. Carlos?
Well, I have a concern on the last page, or the, where it talks about using the vegetation on Mr. Alger's property to satisfy that requirement, and I don't think that's right. So I think that needs to be looked at as well, when, when we get a report from someone who's qualified with the lighting layout. Basically, if, if what he's saying is correct, if what Attorney Cronin's saying is accurate and correct.
Yeah, I, I think I know where Violet Street, it's off of Rockland, right?
Yeah, I saw.
It's how you access, it's off of Rockland Am, I think. It's like a U-shaped road that swings in up towards the campus.
But I'm concerned about that claim, and I'd like to see that addressed as well.
All right, so, forward this letter to the engineers and ask them for their response.
Okay.
See where it takes us. Yeah, John?
The minutes to that meeting is posted somewhere where we can access them, if we don't have them. Are they online, or are they?
Yes.
Yes, they are all online, John, yes, they are.
I remember that meeting clearly, and those were concerns.
Yeah, they are online. Okay. So, it's on your board for, for a bit, Brian. I hope our next applicant is here and ready. I'll give you a few minutes to set up while we take one more housekeeping issue here. And it's a letter from the Conservation Commission reviewing the two thousand and ten Piscataquag River Management Plan. Now, have we ever seen this?
I don't know, since I've been here, the planning board has been presented the Piscataquag River Management Plan. I, I know that Steve Griffin had been working on it previous to me coming here, and may have presented it to the planning board at some point in time.
I went through my files, and I don't have a copy of that anywhere.
Is this from Southern New Hampshire Planning?
I'm not sure where it's from, to be honest with you. I don't think the board has seen it in this current state and modification, edification. And I was going to ask that we be provided with a copy of those documents before we make any consideration.
Is this the Piscataquag River Local Advisory Committee, the plan that they developed for the river?
Yes. Yeah, something like that, and, and some kind of concurrence model. It's been before the Conservation Commission a couple of times, but it's never been here, and I don't think I've ever seen a copy of it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Correspondence and FYI on page two, Carl's just pointed out, B, it's from Jack Munn. We'll be getting in touch with the board, and we know who Jack Munn works for. It's in a paragraph at the bottom of the page, yeah, in parentheses. Is that the right word?
I'm just reading one, one sheet here, is it on another page?
It's FYI, regular correspondence. Correspondence and.
Oh, let me shuffle this again.
The top handout. Stuff we get today. The top handout, because of two on it.
Well, let's, let's assume that we're going to get some copies to review before presentation, so we can at least familiarize ourselves with what this is meant to do for the town. My recommendation is that, for this evening anyways, is that we not take any action on this item until we at least see it. Do I have a consensus on that?
Yes. More motion?
No, I don't want a motion, it's, we're going to direct Brian to provide us with the proper information. It's that simple. All right. Okay. No wall art for this evening? I'm picking on you, Nicole, be careful. All right. While she's doing that, I'm going to read into the record. Map eighteen lot sixty-two dash one. Site plan review hearing and conditional use permit hearing for a proposal to construct two twenty-four-unit apartment buildings. Forty-eight units total, an agnost realty, applicant and St. Anselm's College owner. Moose Club Park Road, zone commercial, and continued from one-twelve oh twelve. Brian, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. A month ago, approximately, the planning board accepted this site plan for review. On Janu, it was January twelfth, two thousand and twelve. Found that it did not have a regional impact, and continued it to this meeting. There was some presentation of the project back then. However, we had, staff had not had, had really much of an opportunity to provide any comments or, or go through the plans with the applicant. So since that time, we have been able to meet with the applicant and provide our comments. They have reviewed the comments and revised their plans based on our comments, and have resubmitted those, actually now, a second time. I handed out to you a revised staff report, which has an email from Megan attached to the top of it. At the beginning of the meeting, I handed that out. Basically, they had done some revisions to the plan and resubmitted that. That's what you all have in front of you on the table. Since that time, Megan went back through the revised plan and the revised comments.
You looking for this correspondence, Phil? I have extra copies up here if you want, need them.
Okay, thank you.
So since the time that we received the plan back from the applicant and sent it out to you, Megan took a look at the, both Megan and I took a look at the, the revised plans, and came up with a list of conditions of approval that would still need to be met prior to final approval of this plan, if the board so desires to approve the plan. And so they, they took the comments that were provided to them and re-revised the plan and sent it to us just in a, on the email format. Megan did go through that with her engineering department, and has been able to knock off several of the approval conditions that had previously been listed in her staff report. So just according to her email, approval conditions thirteen and fourteen can be removed, as well as right below that, condition number seven. Conditions nine through twelve, conditions sixteen through twenty-two, and conditions twenty-four through twenty-nine can all be removed as they have been addressed by the applicant. So, basically.
Which ones are still valid, then?
Basically, that leaves, and I, I revised the staff report in the back of this email to reflect which conditions are still remaining. You have a list of conditions precedent, one through ten, and conditions subsequent, one through six.
So.
So you, you can kind of.
We can basically take this and put it away for this evening, right? That's the old one. And be looking at just your new correspondence from this evening.
Correct. So, that being said, I'll kind of go through what is, what we're, what we're looking at for tonight.
Okay.
I've listed several required conditional use permits and waivers that the applicant will need as part of their approval. They, they have need of a conditional use permit, is my belief anyway, that they get a conditional use permit in accordance with Section three point one-one A six zoning ordinance, which requires a conditional use permit for dwelling units as part of a mixed-use project. That would be specifically for these forty-eight new proposed units. And as part of the approval, the planning board should make the following findings. That the planning, that the proposed plan is reasonable, given physical constraints of development sites and/or access limitations. The multifamily dwelling unit location does not cause excessive fragmentation of the commercial district or destruction of the perceived pedestrian continuity of the commercial districts. All multifamily units will be served by public sewer and water systems. And then, D through I in my number one of your staff review report are the typical conditional use permit findings that would go along with any conditional use permit. So the first three on that list are specific to the wording in the ordinance that allows the planning board to make, to make an approval of a conditional use permit for this purpose. And then the, the remaining six are the standard conditions that need to be met for each conditional use permit. The reason I believe that this conditional use permit is required is because previously, when the, the site plan had been approved, back in two thousand and eight, I believe it was, the approval contained a conditional use permit that had been granted by the planning board. And that, one of the findings in that conditional use permit for this very same thing was that the gross square footage of the residential is not larger than the gross square footage of the non-residential use. In this case, that's one of the requests that they are making, that the planning board grant another conditional use permit for it. And so I don't believe that in this case, they can make that, you can make that same finding. Therefore, I think that conditional use permit applied only to the first twenty-five units that went into Abingdon Square, and that a new conditional use permit would be required to, to cover this allowance again. So.
Can we stop there for a second?
I don't know if that makes sense to everyone in their heads, but.
I'm not sure it makes sense, because as a member of the board at the time, the conditional use permit was based upon a presentation made in terms of the density of housing on all of the sites of this development. And I'm not so sure how you can, can't modify that, that I'm aware of. Unless someone can explain to me that this board has the power to modify that conditional use permit after it has been granted. I can find no precedent, nor can I find anything in our ordinances that allow us to do that. So therefore, you have to take and ignore the prior conditional use permit, if you, if the board members desire to do that, and grant a new conditional use permit for this project, encompassing all the other properties here also, since they are using the mixed-use development theory on their density calculations. So it's an all-encompassing thing, and remembering that only a portion of this commercial space has actually been built to date. And I, and I think this is, we went round and round when this was approved the first time over this issue of the number of units. over this issue of the number of units, size and capacity of the commercial space. And I don't want the members of this current board to forget what the prior board has done in the past in their consideration. I have no doubt that the project will benefit this community, but I don't want to set a dangerous precedent of reconsidering granted conditional use permits because they'll open us up to interpretation for every conditional use permit we've granted. Tim?
Well, that, was that conditional use permit granted when this was, and it was one lot? When it was one lot? Did it, or, because they did subdivide these lots?
Yeah. It was proposed as three separate entities. It was subdivided only after the intended buyer for the twenty-five units of housing required a separate entity ownership to proceed with their tax credit financing for that project.
Neighbor Works.
Yes.
With the exception of the Rite Aid lot, I believe.
The Rite Aid lot, I don't know that-
Was subdivided out.
Was also subdivided off. So, that we've seen this plan about five times in various stages. But the original concept was a mixed use development is how it originally started.
Can I follow up? Did they ever present any housing density projection for the rear property, which is what we're talking about right now? Did they give us anything?
There was a plan with twenty-five units of townhouse development on that site.
So, twenty-five units is not forty-eight.
That's correct. But that does, there are other considerations about density allowed in mixed use developments that need to be considered here. They're gonna make a presentation that basically says that they're within the density factors for mixed use development. It's only, the only consideration is the prior granted commission, conditional use permit had a density factor applied to it that the, that the proposer agreed to.
Right. So, yours, so that if it was twenty-five units, as you stated, we agreed to that conditional use permit, correct? Use permit should not be applied to this project then?
The, what they're applying for is a new conditional use permit, not a modification to the one that's there. The application is for a new conditional use permit. And you have to grant that based upon the board's interpretation about what that density and the, and the complexity and the content of this development should be.
So, they want us to set aside that, the existing conditional use permit and consider this new proposal. And that's, I assume what we're gonna hear, the argument.
Based upon the fact, I haven't been able to find anything that allows us to modify an existing conditional use permit.
I think we're gonna hear pretty shortly, Hal.
He'll have the floor when he gets a chance to.
No. I said, short, pretty shortly.
He's a very patient man.
I am.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Tim?
So, if, based on this discussion and what was presented to this board, it would stand to reason that before it could be allowed to go forward, we have to have the matching commercial side of it, not just a couple of empty lots sitting up in the front.
Well, right now, there's been no presentation made to this board as to what the outcome would be on the front lots.
Well, it's not this applicant's project, it's the previous applicant's project.
That's correct. Well, no. The applicant for the prior project is the same applicant here, I believe.
Same owner.
Same owner.
Owner, not applicant.
Property owner.
Property, same property owner.
Saint Benedictine's property. We're talking about the church.
So, applicants and, and property owners are sometimes different. They're two, they're one and, not one and the same. Okay? So, it's a complex issue. And I'd rather have this board consider this as a conditional use permit, a new one, and not get involved in the argument of what is, was approved. You can use that in your judgment as to what you feel is fair and what is just under this and, and whatever. But I, I think this is, we should entertain this as a new conditional use permit as it reflects on all four sites that are there. We have the Rite Aid that's been built, we have an unbuilt subdivided lot, we have twenty-five units of townhouse by Neighbor Works, and we have a proposal for forty-eight units of garden style apartments for the rear site at this point in time. And we can judge that based upon the characters here and we can, we can decide not to apply the density or consider any density calculations other than that as presented by this applicant. Not the property owner, by this applicant. So, if we decide that this applicant is okay with forty-eight units, then we should feel comfortable in granting it a conditional use permit even though the front has not been built. Because there's no stipulation as to say timing and when things happen. Phil?
When we discussed this the last time, one of the things that was brought up was that this portion of the project was the fifth phase. And I haven't heard anything tonight or seen anything in any of the reports that I have in front of me. And I have to apologize since, you know, Tim said, we just got these, you know, prior. But I've gone through here and I don't see anything that refers to that because the questions that we had was, how does the fifth one come before us while the other ones, one through four, are a complete? And that was a question that we had.
I don't believe that there's any timeframe established by a conditional use permit as to what comes first and what is allowed to come last. So, based upon economics or demand or clients or whatever, they can come in any order that they want to. As, as projects progress, they could come in any, any timeframe. So, they're not saying that one has to come before the other. They can come in any sequence.
But I thought our question was to clarify, to find out for sure if that was, if that's the way it was. I thought that's my understanding.
I have never, in reference to this project, seen any discussion about what has to come first or any requirement that this be done before we allow that to happen. That's never been part of the discussions or approvals by this board. So, it's, it's an unusual, we've never seen this situation before. So, we need to kinda work our way through it. It's not that the, I don't have any question about engineering or complexity of the project or the correctness of the details or whatever. That's for staff and whatever to review. My only concern is the granting of the various conditional requirements and permits as, as asked for by the applicant and also the waivers asked for by the applicant. And before we do conditional use permits, we will do the waivers first to begin with. Brian?
You want me to go on or?
Oh, I could talk forever, so you might just want to shut me off. Let's get going.
Okay.
Where are you starting with, Brian?
So, I'm gonna go to number two on my staff report of the staff review. Second conditional use permit that they will need is in accordance with section five point nine of the zoning ordinance which requires that the gross square footage of the residential use be not larger than the gross square footage of the non-residential use. And as part of the, of this approval, the Planning Board should make the following findings. And B through G are the typical, but A is, the proposed plan is reasonable given physical constraints of development sites and/or access limitations. So, that would be in addition to what you normally approve as part of a conditional use permit. I don't know if you wanna stop me there and, and discuss that one or if you want me to just keep going?
Well, where do we stand on that factor? I mean, when you talk about fifty-fifty, where do we stand? Is any presentation, I haven't seen anything yet that says, we have a hundred thousand commercial, we have a hundred thousand residential.
As one of, as one of my comments to the, to the applicant, I wanted them to provide that data to us. And so, actually, if you look on page four of your plans, I had them put that information right onto the plan as to how much square footage is included and how they're broken up per phase. So, I'll give you a second to get there, but page four has a series of notes on the right-hand side and it's note number seven. And basically, phase one-
Should we get the big one out so I can actually read it?
Yeah, if you wanna pull your big ones out, that's might be easier to read.
On the bottom, please. So, given those numbers, what's the result?
Okay, so-
Not a math whiz, so.
I didn't have them added up in my head either, but I'll, I'll give you the numbers at least. Phase one, Rite Aid is fourteen-six-eighty. Phase two is approved commercial space and it's fifteen thousand nine hundred square feet. Phase three was additional commercial approved, commercial space in five thousand six hundred square feet. Phase four was the townhomes at Abingdon Square, which were developed at thirty-one thousand nine hundred square feet. And phase five, residences at Moose Club Park, that's this development, would be developed at fifty-five thousand nine hundred ten square feet.
So, we already got a disparity of numbers, meaning we have more than fifty percent residential right now.
With, with the first three phases, it still, the, the commercial exceeded the residential. Yes. The commercial exceeded the residential.
Five thousand more feet to go.
Right.
Yes.
So, with this fifth phase, that's where it exceeds the, the residential. And if you think about it, even if they had dropped it to the twenty-five that they had presented earlier, they wouldn't be able to make that requirement with, with five thousand square feet.
That would've been my point too.
So, this, I think, is, is a reasonable request. I honestly, I don't even like this rule in our regulations. But it, it, it just does not make sense to me for a mixed use project to have less residential square footage than commercial. Because typically, if, if you think about a mixed use project, you got, you know, I would say one floor, if you're thinking about one building, one floor of commercial with maybe three or four floors of residential above it or office or whatever it may be. But to me, it, it, it doesn't make sense to have that, this requirement. And in this case, I think it even more so applies that it should not be a requirement of them.
I, and to go back in history and when that was written, it was written that, not out of any study, but out of, out of an application that the, the board thought fifty-fifty was equal. I will sit here as a professional and tell you it's not. I have projects in Portsmouth that are five to one. One being residential, five being, no, five being residential, one being commercial. And I can point to several projects where it's five to one, easily five to one in the successful projects.
Well, we're not looking to turn into Portsmouth here.
I didn't say where I was working, did I?
Well, I mean, we're, let's go apples for apples if we're gonna do it.
Okay. But for instance, it does happen that that percentage is not always applied. This is one of the few communities that does have that application for mixed use development. I will say that. Phil?
Well, going back to when this project was originally presented to the board, Mr. Cruz was here. We had a discussion and he asked us what we wanted to see out of this project. One of the things that I said that I wanted to see was I wanted to see more commercial and residential on this project. And I just have a concern that now I'm seeing it turned around where it's becoming more and more residential than commercial.
Okay. Tim?
What we need to discuss is what is our goal in mixed use? Is our goal in mixed use to balance commercial and residential? So that the properties can be developed so that you have different types of things going on? Or, or do we wanna talk about having an unfair balance? We, do, have we ever defined what, what we looking for in a mixed use project since we have mixed use regulations?
Can I, can I add something to that?
Yep, go ahead.
In the discussions that we've had in previously with the mixed use, my recollection and my understanding of allowing the mixed use was to allow portions of the property that perhaps did not lend themselves ideally to commercial use. Such as perhaps this section of this here where these apartments are being proposed. They lend themselves a little bit more towards the residential use which also allows a use and also an income to offset. Because if you took the project strictly as commercial, it couldn't, a lot of them feasibly can't be built out as commercial. So, you would eliminate a portion of the, the usage of that property. So, allowing that mixed use, that blend, and to me, it should be more site specific rather than necessarily a fixed ratio that's in a book on a plan that makes it difficult to apply to a certain project. Because what I have the concern about is that the property that we have that's accessible from Mashed Road that we put a traffic light in so that Rite Aid and all the other commercials come into that place, which are prime for commercial, are being slowly morphed into residential. I don't have a problem with the residential back here because originally when this project came and was proposed, this was a final phase and housing was proposed for this, the twenty-four units. We've known that from the beginning. I've never had a problem with that. But I've also been, there's also a representation and also an expectation by this Planning Board and by the members of the community who came here at the public hearings. And these people that are all down here on Moose Club Park, all, the entire community had an expectation that we were, we were gonna put a light. The biggest thing is why are you putting a third light on Mashed Road between two other traffic lights? And we made sure, one of the conditions was that they were all tied in together so that they, we wouldn't have random light people coming and stopping so that they be all controlled. We looked at that in a planning perspective with the expectation and the understanding of having commercial development through that traffic light. And I just have a concern that allowing, seeing this come now in the final phase, and when I asked a question about the phasing, and then I'm getting that we don't have a control over the phasing. Well, I have a difficulty with one, two, three, and four not meeting the expectations that we had. And now five is coming. And instead of being twenty-four, it's forty-eight. And I just have a difficulty with it. I, I, all the conditions, all the waivers that are being requested. If you read through this, the amount of waivers and conditions that are being asked for, I have a little difficulty with it, that's all.
Alright, Brian, you have the floor. As part of two C, if completed as proposed, the development will comply with all requirements of this section and any conditions or standards established in the ordinance for this use. Now, I also would make that a a concern. And also part D, the use will be compatible with the neighborhood. Now, neighbors can also make, whether it be visual or otherwise, that the size of this building greatly affects their individual residences. I don't believe that to be true. That's a professional opinion, but that may not be the opinion of this board. But I don't professionally have a problem with multifamily of this scale. So, we'll leave it at that. Brian, do you wanna continue to number three?
Yes. Okay, so, number three is the third conditional use- Okay, so, number three, uh, is the third conditional use permit for, uh, in accordance with section four point four point two of the zoning ordinance, which requires that in no case shall a multifamily building, except for a bona fide student dormitory, contain more than twelve dwelling units, uh, except by conditional use permit from the planning board upon a finding that the proposed buildings are in scale with both their neighborhood and the town as a whole. And so, that would be one of the findings that the, that the planning board should make, um, as part of the approval of a conditional use permit to exceed twelve and, and basically to double that requirement. And, um, I will make note that there are other apartment complexes in town that do have more than twelve units per building, um, namely, I, I know I can think of two offhand is Timberwood and Maple Ave has a, a couple of apartment buildings there that, that exceed that. So, it, it's not something that's not been seen before by the town, at least.
Tim?
Brian, I, I take, uh, exception to your statements because the word neighborhood is part of that sentence. In scale with both the neighborhood and the town as a whole, that neighborhood does not have buildings of that size. So, let's be sure that the word neighborhood is included in that sentence. So, I take exception to the statement that, uh, that you find that these buildings are in scale with both the neighborhood and the town as a whole, because they are not.
Well, in my mind, and I guess this is an opinion, but, um, I'm looking at Pinnardville as a whole, and there are, there, it's, it's a much more dense area than, um, the rest of the town of Goffstown, and to see an apartment complex go in there, um, I don't think is outside of the realm of, uh, you know, a denser populated area, um, that, that has all the commercial, it's got the school right there, it's got, um, it's got everything, um, within a, a small defined area. And so, um, to me, I don't think that that's outside of the neighborhood scale of, of what that's, what they're proposing.
The driveway exits onto Moose Club Park Road. Now, generally, when I talk about my neighborhood, I talk about people that are near me, not so, so much walking distance, but short driving distance, certainly within view. And there is not a single building like either one of these anywhere on Moose Club Park Road, so that's, I'm gonna leave it at that.
But I, I think there are also other multifamily buildings and structures, St. Edmonds, St. A's, have, have dormitories with apartments and stuff in them with, of multifamily of certain sizes that are bigger than our requirements here.
But there is, there is an exception for bona fide dormitories right here.
I, um, I, I, I looked at the other aspects and, and buildings in town and, and made a point to drive through, um, Timberwood this afternoon, and I had a feeling that these buildings are maybe even smaller than the ones that are in Timberwood. To get a feel, and those are, I think, three-story condo minims, I think. So, I'm, I'm not particularly worried about the scale and the number of units in a building structure. I think that's a, a decision made by the proposer or the applicant. It's our decision whether, as a board and, and as the regulations read with the twelve units, whether we've, and it, it's, and it allows us a conditional use permit to change this, so there always was intended some flexibility in this if the board wishes to consider it that way. That's why it's listed as a conditional use permit and not a, in the zoning ordinance that would require them to get a variance.
All right.
So, it is up to us to evaluate this proposal in its content and to see if the buildings are in fact too big or too many or whatever. That's our job in this particular case. But do you want to go on to, yes, Brian?
I'll, I'll just make one more comment on that subject. I do believe that, um, the scale is affected by, um, their location as well. If they were, you know, right up next to, um, to, you know, ten feet away from a single-family house, and they were putting in a three-story building, that might be a, a different story. They do have a, a fairly decent separation, and they're up on a slope where, you know, it's gonna be, uh, separated by a, a, a decent buffer of trees. You know, I don't know that the scale is gonna be as much of an important factor in determining whether or not it, it fits within the neighborhood.
I, I honestly suspect after walking this site, that given the great elevations off of Moose Club Park uphill, the power line and trees, or even visual from Mashed Road, you'll be able to even see these buildings. You're gonna have to drive up this driveway to see these buildings. Okay. Number four.
Uh, number four is another conditional use permit, uh, and this is, um, a conditional use permit in accordance with six, section six point eight of the zoning ordinance, which requires that a project identity sign and directional sign, um, shall be approved by conditional use permit to ensure their coordination within the project and may result in approval conditions affecting other normally allowed signs. That one didn't have any specific other conditions that needed to be, uh, a finding made by the planning board, other than the typical, um, six conditional use permit findings for, for all conditional use permits.
And they provided us with a design of the sign, if I'm not mistaken, in our package.
They, they did.
I thought that was rather nice.
So, that, that sign, um, that, that was submitted to you in your packets is their representation of what their, uh, project identity sign will look like? And, uh, they're, they will need a conditional use permit in order to, uh, make that happen per the zoning ordinance.
And, and if, if, if we do grant that, that sign will have to become part of the plan set that the, uh, the board approves and signs. Any members of board have questions about this signage? Okay. Let's go to number five.
Okay.
We've had numerous staff comments, back and forth, fire departments, DPW, your comments. The only thing I want to talk about is what's left. What's on there is immaterial if it's been solved and addressed. So...
Well, what's left is actually what's on the conditions of approval.
That's your revised list that we received as an amendment to our meeting notes for this evening.
Right.
And that is on the end of this, page five or six or whatever.
Right. Okay, so then, I'll jump to seven. Uh, that's regarding waivers. Following waivers, the development regulations are required and recommended by staff. A, waive section seven point, six point one of the zoning ordinance, requiring loading spaces for this use in accordance with section seven point five point four point two of the zoning ordinance, which allows the planning board to waive some or all of the parking requirements if the planning board finds there to be sufficient parking. Uh, sec, uh, number B, letter B, is to waive appendix A, section nine, colon B, which requires a sidewalk on streets for commercial districts and residential districts. The applicant has provided a bike lane at our request. They did not have anything down the, the, the drive or the, we're calling it a private road now, um, as part of our review. But they did not have any separation of pedestrian traffic on the previous roadway, and we requested that they put in a sidewalk as a compromise bec, due to the difficulty of raising a sidewalk and keeping the drainage working properly. We, uh, determined that it would be okay to put in a defined bike lane, which has a line separating where, um, either pedestrians or, or bicyclists could walk and, or, or ride, and, um, that that would suffice, um, but that since it was not technically a sidewalk, um, that they should still be, uh, given a waiver by the planning board, um, to, to make that official. So, that was, that's the second waiver. Third waiver is to waive appendix A, section four, table AC. The applicant is requesting that the minimum shoulder width be reduced to two feet rather than three feet, and this has been reviewed by the town engineer. She's okay with that. And the fourth waiver is to waive appendix A, section four, table A, colon I. The applicant is requesting to reduce the minimum centerline radii from three hundred twenty-five feet to sixty-seven feet where the road meets the parking area, and to hundred ninety-six and two hundred feet for all other curves within the development. Town engineer is okay with this waiver pending approval of speed limit per ASHTO standards. A condition of approval on the waiver would be that posted speed limit meet ASHTO standards. And I'm not sure if, uh, Megan had put in a condition of approval of that nature, and maybe, maybe she can respond to this, um, as to whether or not they've satisfied her needs.
Just a quick item, um, not knowing the, the ASHTO chart about speeds and curves, can someone educate me quickly? What would the speed be on the road, please?
Twenty miles per hour, and, um, Megan, do you want me to address this? Do we figure out that this wouldn't be a waiver because we meet ASHTO requirements? The regulation actually states, um, meet development regulations or ASHTO requirements, and if we post speed limit signs, um, we meet ASHTO requirements. So, it would be twenty miles, we'd have to post twenty miles per hour up the majority of the driveway, and around that sharp curve, we'd have to put a fifteen mile per hour speed limit sign.
Okay. I'm not gonna confuse people that live there, okay? It's gonna be one or the other, as far as I'm concerned. Uh, Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to address, uh, a comment Brian made. This is gonna be designated as a private road, Brian?
Yes.
Why, why is that being such? Why use that language?
The, the, the alternative was a, a driveway, a pri, private driveway, and, um, they were actually proposing to build it to the private road standards anyway, and, um, I, there's some development regulations that, um, also, uh, needed to be met in accordance with it, and so, as part of the TRC, you know, you know, we reviewed it and thought it would be best to consider it as a private road versus a, uh, just a simple driveway.
Okay, now, I'm gonna state my opposition to that. We, um, we approved a private road called Parsons Lane many years ago, and we did not require it be inspected, and we did not have it, uh, meet certain standards, and then when the residents couldn't afford to have it paved and maintain it, they wanted the town to take it over. They subsequently petition, petitioned the board of selectmen, the board of selectmen made arrangements for that road to be taken over by the town. So, I will never vote for another private road in the town of Goffstown if I'm on this board for the next forty years, because you are setting a standard for the residents to come back and petition the town to take the road over, and then the town is gonna be responsible for the maintenance of that road in perpetuity. So, if this is going to be a condominium project, this needs to be called a driveway on the plan. If it's called a private road, I'll never get behind it.
Can I just add something to that? The, in your regulations, you do state, it was a good catch from the, the staff, um, in the regulations, it does state that anything over three dwelling units can, um, be a private road. We could ask for a waiver from that and call it a driveway, and we have no problem with that, but...
You may get a motion that way. John, you had a, your hand up.
I do, yeah, um, on that road, just 'cause of my lack of understanding of it and, and knowledge of this, of this particular subject, is that road, um, if it is a private road or a driveway, the town, uh, is, following up on Tim, will not, is not responsible to maintain it? And also, uh, who, um, enforces those twenty mile an hour speed limits, or is that just prima facie kind of?
Rental police do.
The rental police with their rental radar guns?
And their rental guns.
It's private property. It's private property.
Private, private property, so...
I'm, I'm sorry.
So, it's just a, it's just an advisory speed limit, then?
It's a property manager's responsibility.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I just address the, the, the type of road that's gonna be put on? It will meet all, for all intents and purposes, town standards for, you know, if the town ever does need to take that over.
They don't even mention that.
Yeah, either they do or they don't.
I, I won't mention it, but it's, it's that, I think that rule has probably been changed since Parsons Drive was ever built a long time ago.
What rule has been changed, Brian?
We accepted it two years ago.
About, about building it to the standards so that if a private road ever were to be accepted by the town, that it wouldn't be, you know, subpar road, basically.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm gonna wait you finish.
No, that, um...
We also discussed, uh, a little project off of Evergreen this couple of years ago that started out as a little road, and it turned into a driveway with a cul-de-sac, and I fought against that, and the developer, it's not been built yet, but they changed it to a, two, two driveway, common driveway, because if it looks like a road, people will ask to have it taken over after a while, so. I just wanna be sure that this is, this discussion has been had about this property.
So, is it the board's view that we should get it, we should ask a waiver?
You'll get a vote on that one when it comes to the waiver time. It'll be a condition of whatever happens. Let me assure you of that. Any other members of board have a question, ref, reference to the waivers requested? Can we skip eight, Brian?
Eight, yes.
Just giving us the direction.
Just in note.
And I, I'm concerned about number nine. I have no...
Yes.
Professionally have no compunction of forcing a developer to do anything.
Well...
That's my opinion. And so, I would leave it up to, um, the developer to tell us what, whether he does or does not want to. You can make all the recommendations and suggestions you want. But, but if the developer wishes to, to do something outside of his site, we'll be more than happy to accommodate him. As part of his project.
If I may, Mr. Chair? To cut quickly to the chase, so that it, we don't spend a lot of time on...
Richard Aniknost.
Spend a lot of time, of the board's time, on this issue. We agree with, um, Brian's third recommendation as far as a contribution to the trails of eight thousand dollars for the trailhead. But our objection was, we didn't want to go into the right of way and start beginning to do work and then determining where does it begin, where does it end, what's the scope of it, and all those kinds of things.
Okay.
So, the eight thousand dollars, we are not, we would be pleased to contribute to the rails to trails. And, you know, I, for the record, I built them all the way to, to the Goffstown line. I might as well contribute something in Goffstown as well. So, that being said, we accept staff's recommendation to contribute eight thousand dollars towards the, either rehabilitation of the trail or the construction of the trailhead.
Okay. I knew you had something to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. All right. So, does any member of the board have any questions to the applicant? Before I allow them to do a presentation and give them the floor, they've heard us talk about many of these conditions in applications and waivers and conditional use permits, and I'd like to, to allow them the opportunity to address any of our concerns, plus also present any information that they would like to, and, and also allow the public to speak shortly thereafter, to ask questions about, uh, the project, and the public will also have an opportunity when we consider each conditional use permit, so that they can address anything specifically if they wish to, when it comes, time to, our, this board making a decision. Any members of board have a problem with that? Suggestions? You have the floor.
Good evening. Nicole Decap from TF Moran. Also here with me is, uh, Bill Tucker, uh, attorney Bill Tucker, and, um, Bob DeVall from TF Moran to talk about traffic, and you two, and, uh, you've already heard from Dick Aniknost from Aniknost Realty and Development. I do want to ask the board, do you, would you like me to go over the plan first? I know we went over it briefly last time, or would you like to just jump into the conditional use?
Or would you like to just jump into the conditional use permit criteria?
What I would like to do is educate the public. Is anybody in the public here this evening referenced this application? Raise your hand, please.
Okay.
We have several people here, so could you please explain the content of the project? And then we can discuss particulars and items as they come up.
This property, just to get a location of where we sit. This property sits on the northern side of Mystic Brook. Adjacent to the Shaw's Plaza, the Shaw's building is right here. And the Hannaford Building is over here. In front of it is the residence along Moose Club Park Road. This site does not have access in 2001. It was given an access easement to access this property because it is landlocked by the Mystic Brook River. And the residence is along Moose Club Park Road. So a variance was approved, I believe, in 2008 to subdivide this lot off, knowing that it didn't have access to Moose, to Mass Road. On this property as well is a conservation easement that was granted, again, back in 2008 along Mystic Brook. It does not follow the lines of the 100-foot conservation district exactly. We do have a little bit of discrepancy, not discrepancy, but a little bit of non-overlapped area in here. The conservation easement follows the Brook, not, not the wetlands. So that's why there is a little bit of area that is not in that. The other easement that we have on site is the PS&amp;H easement. We have a 100-foot PS&amp;H easement that goes across the corner of the site here. As far as utilities go, there is private water within Moose Club Park Road, not private water, sorry. Public water, Manchester Water Works. There is sewer, municipal sewer. Electric lines that go through the site that we can tie into. There is not a natural gas line within Moose Club Park Road. There is in Mass Road, but not in Moose Club Park Road. So this site will be serviced by propane, underground propane tanks. So getting into the site, we are providing an access driveway within that 50-foot access easement. Our utilities will be coming up here, which include our sewer, and our water, and our telephone and cable. Our electric, we will be, we do propose two transformers. These transformers will be tied into the utility poles that are within these easements. We have discussed this with PS&amp;H, and they don't have a problem with that. All of the work, we, very early on, met with the board and felt that it was very important to keep everything out of the, both the conservation district and the conservation easement. So all of our grading and buildings and pavement, all of the work is going to be completely outside of the conservation easement and the 100-foot conservation district. The work that we're proposing, the development that we're proposing is two apartment buildings, both with 24 units. We have added, we did have, I think we showed 96 or 97 parking spaces before. We have added a couple of spaces. The fire department wanted access along the side of the building. So we have added a hammerhead on the side of the building. And lost a couple of spaces up front, but gained some along the side. Another thing, another staff comment was about the sidewalk or slash bike lane. We did add a bike lane along this. So we did increase, whatever we decided this to be, driveway or roadway, another five feet to include that, that drive, that bike lane. As far as drainage goes, drainage will be underground, underground within the upper section of this development. We are using proposed storm tech systems, which are basically an underground chambered system. So we're going to collect the water with catch basins, and water will be infiltrated in these underground detention systems. We have very good soil in this area. It's all sandy soil, so we don't see a problem with that. This, this development did have to meet AOT requirements, which we are, we are working on getting our permit. The state is reviewing our application as we speak. So we do require an alteration of terrain permit from New Hampshire D E S, as well as a sewer connection permit from D E S as well. So with the drainage system, according to AOT requirements, we're not allowed to let any water leave the site onto budding properties within, in a 50-year storm event, which is a rather large storm event. So we have met that by providing, actually, we do have open drainage up here now, bio-retention area at the request, not request, recommendation of the DPW. We added a bio-retention area with sediment pour bays to provide some open drainage. Bio-retention area is similar to your rain gardens. I know that you did approve one for the Rite Aid that's working rather well. It, it looks like a garden. It just has plants, and it's a depressed area that has plants and allows the water to be treated and infiltrated with the plant, plant growth in the soil media underneath it. So we have the bio-retention areas, we have the underground systems. And between those systems, we aren't allowing any water from this development to leave the site that was previously leaving, previously leaving there. Along the driveway, we had to do something different because we don't have enough, we don't have much room. We only have that 50-foot accessway. So we did have to look at something smaller than what was proposed up above. We are proposing tree filters, which are alteration of terrain, are approved treatment device from the alteration of terrain. And the tree filters, as I described earlier, they're basically a six-foot diameter, six-foot diameter column of stone, plant material, compost material, and your, your tree on top. So what that does is it filters the water, and then allows the water to percolate into the ground. So those are spaced along our, our accessway to collect and, within a, within a roadside swale, to collect and treat our storm water. Our overflow from this, if water were to overflow in a very large storm event, we do have a very small underground detention system down at the base of this accessway. I think it's a 10-unit system, so it's very small. We could be, we were able to fit that in. And if in case it overflows, say if we get 100-year storm event or above, it is tied into the municipal system. So we have taken care of the, the drainage that way. Snow removal, I know is a big concern with the town. Snow storage, we are proposing snow storage along the perimeter. There is one area that was brought up right here. I think that's the only one that was adjacent to the conservation district. However, this area, there's, there's a raised berm area that naturally exists there, and we're not disturbing that. So the grade actually goes down in this area. So any snow melt would go right into the dry, right into the pavement and be collected by our catch basin. So we, we have that, that covered as well. Along the driveway, most likely, it will end up on, we have a guardrail on this side. It will most likely end up in this whale, and where it will be collected and treated in the tree filters. Part of this, because we have such an elevation difference between Moose Club Park Road and the site, it's like a 35-foot difference between this. So we had to figure out a way to get this, this accessway in that was both economical and, it's not really economical, but that would fit into this site so that we're not creating a bowl in here and disturbing too much area. So what we did is, we, we've had to propose a retaining wall. Now, that retaining wall is going to be a modular block wall. We have had it, we have had it preliminary, preliminarily designed because one of the comments that Megan had brought up was, and rightly so, is the, the wall design, since this wall is going to be about 20 to 23 feet tall, she was concerned with the geo grid and the utilities within this driveway. So, and that was a very good concern. So we have gone to, we have preliminarily designed that wall and, and found that it won't interfere with, with our utilities. So we have covered that face, too. But that is, at some sections, at the highest point, is going to be about 23 feet tall. And then it tapers off as we get lower or higher. We are proposing an additional wall along this unit, too. Along this building, too. That wall is going to be probably about five feet tall. And two other walls, which I believe is three feet tall, and then the other one is about five feet tall, too. So there are, we have had to have walls to maintain our, our disturbance within this small area allowed to us and outside of the conservation district and outside of, and inside of the access easement. As far as the conditional use permits and waivers, the conditional use permits, I think you've gone over all of which ones we need. I do want to ask with the waivers, it does depend on whether you want this seen as a driveway or a private road because the waivers will change. If it's a driveway, we're asking for pavement width for a waiver. We won't be asking for a waiver for sidewalks because it won't be required. If it's a roadway, then all of those waivers would be, would be applicable. So I do ask, would it be possible to make that determination before I go on to waivers? Or do you want me to just go on to the waivers that don't involve that?
I think probably when it comes time to considering the waivers, we'll take each one individually anyways. We'd also allow you the opportunity to talk to the board.
Okay.
And about each one of them as it comes forward, rather than trying to remember what's been said. And I would also reflect that as being true with the public. If the public has something to say about an individual conditional use permit, so we don't get all confused, I will allow public comment on to each issue as we take it up this evening.
Okay. So would you like me to present it as if it's still a private road?
I think you better sit down for a couple of seconds and let us discuss it.
All right.
Since the question has been asked, I'm going to just poll the board about this private road, public road, driveway situation. And I'll start with Carl.
I agree with Tim. With regards to the private road, I'd rather it be a driveway.
Okay. Tim?
I would prefer to see it referred to as a driveway or an accessway.
Carlos?
Do you think that makes sense?
Simone?
No comments right now.
John?
I think they've done everything so well. Everything looks like they've taken care of everything. But I would like to see what they would prefer to call it. Because they're going to own it, and they obviously know what they're doing from beginning to end.
Their only concern is, and other members of the board is, that we don't want the developer applicant to ever come back to this town, even if there's a successor owner, and quiz this town to take over this road for maintenance and upkeep.
I appreciate that. I certainly agree, I understand, but...
So we're going to have to, if that's the case, then that's how we'll have to do it.
My vote is to call it whatever they want to call it and don't ever, the town ever take it over.
Yeah, you can't prevent it both ways.
Can't prevent what?
Town take, not taking it over.
Right.
If, if it's a road.
Yes. So, under 9111, it has to have a name anyways. So now is the question. The consensus of the board is, it's a driveway.
Are you going to ask?
You can ask Steve and...
Steve? What his opinion is, or does he not matter?
I thought I did.
No.
You mean you jumped in?
No, I just responded.
Without giving him a chance to speak?
I just responded to the comment about the town not taking it over.
Steve, you have the floor.
I agree with Tim as well.
Anyways.
Okay. I, I think that's a very good rationale. And the reason why I say that is because the point that's been made is if it's a road, a private road, we have certain requirements. And one of the waivers is the sidewalk. And what traditionally happens is when a developer comes in, and then he's told that he needs to put a sidewalk in, what we say to him, what he says is, well, it's going to be a private road anyway. So we waived the sidewalk in lieu of other issues. And then down the road, five years down the road, it becomes an issue because certain things were exchanged in the approval process for not having that sidewalk. And then when you ask the town to take it over, there's no sidewalk. And everybody wants a sidewalk. And who pays for it? The taxpayers.
And I think the issue here is, if we call it a driveway...
Correct.
We're still going to insist on a bike path. Why? Because I think that was part of the proposal was to allow access from the site purpose they want to use it for. But I think it's a, there's no other connection to the community other than that driveway. You can't, can't go across the brook.
Or the trail up through the woods.
Or the, well, there's a trail through the woods, but you have to jump the brook to get across it.
Right.
But I don't see that happening. So I, I particularly like that walkway surface. It also allows you some expansion room in case of whatever that might happen on that road for emergency vehicular access, for instance.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
We have no problem with the bike path. We think that staff recommendation was good. It enhances the property itself, so we have no problem with that. If you go to the driveway, the reason that we need a waiver is because the pavement is too wide for a driveway. Am I correct?
Correct.
So I don't have a problem with it being called the driveway. That's what we had originally proposed, as long as you understand that the waiver we would be asking for for the driveway is that when we add the bike path to it, and the width that we actually need to get two cars up and down, that's what creates the waiver for the width.
So we got to give you a waiver for the width of the pavement. But it also accommodates the turning radius of all the emergency vehicles as shown on the latest submission also.
That's correct.
Right. It's a driveway.
So without the width, we'd probably be a little tight on those, too.
Correct.
So I understand the circumstance.
So we've, so we've got a private driveway...
Yes.
With a private bike, bike path.
Yes. Just a delineated side of the road.
So from an envi, from an environmental perspective. We reduce the shoulder width so that we can reduce the pavement, and then we add it back on again with a bike path. It's a private bike path.
Correct.
For the residents of the project.
Right.
Yeah, but it's a bike path that doesn't tie to any other bike paths or any other sidewalks. It's just...
It ties down to the rail trail. Rail trail is right there, right here.
Right past the foot of the driveway.
Right, okay.
That's the only cross tie that's there. If, if the developer wished to put a bike path down there, it would be up to the board to determine, yeah, we like that, then we'll okay that. I think if that's what he wants to propose. I don't think we asked for the bike path, did we?
Yes.
Well, it's to satisfy the, satisfy the sidewalk issue.
Okay. So we're, we're back to the catch 22, Richard. And we'll try to decide what to do with this in a, a little bit later this evening.
There's one more thing is, the waiver also would constitute, or be triggered as a result of this being more than three units. So you can't have a driveway with a building that's more than three units. So between the width of the pavement and more than three units, that would be the waiver that you'd be granting if it were a driveway versus the other waivers if it was a private road.
With your assistance, we'll, hopefully we'll word it right when we get to the end of this tonight.
Fair enough.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Okay. Now, members of the board, do we have any questions to the applicant before I open it to the public? See if any member of the public wishes to speak. You've been very quiet, Sarah. You don't have anything to say?
I'm waiting for the conditional use permit.
Oh, I understand that. Yes, Phil?
Yeah, I had a question on the waiver, is it waiver, conditional, yeah, waiving the three-hundred-and-twenty-five-foot radii to sixty-seven foot where the driveway meets the...
The driveway meets the parking lot.
Driveway meets the parking area.
Yes.
Okay.
Little sharp curve right there.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but when I look at that, from three-hundred-and-twenty-five feet to sixty-seven foot, that's a big change of radio.
It's actually another part of waivers because we actually meet actual requirements. That should be, well, it should be stricken off the list. If it was, if it was a private road, it would be stricken off the list because we meet actual requirements.
If it's driveway, it doesn't matter.
But it's a driveway, so it would be off the list anyways. That requirement is a very conservative requirement that's, that's more for higher-speed roadways.
Okay.
Not for driveways or accessways that you're going to have to go slow up anyways.
Okay, I guess, though, the only question I have, and it's just informational, I mean, it's really not an issue here because it's a driveway. But this is two lanes, one lane each way, and the majority of the traffic that you have coming in here is going to be most likely automobiles. You'll probably have somebody, a truck, coming in to pick up the trash. And when people move in and out. So, that radii is really to accommodate tractor trailers?
It's based on speed.
Okay, speed, but it's, right, it allows a truck, a larger vehicle. And the fire department, I assume, was okay with this as far as, the reason why I'm asking it is if this, the amount of stories that are in here.
Right.
Probably would need a ladder truck. We have very, very large ladder trucks.
True.
Just want to make sure that that's not an issue.
In the packages, you should have received, I believe you received a separate plan that showed a truck turning radius. That's the Tarow One model truck. That's Gostown's ladder truck, truck radius.
I want to make sure that that's specifically because of what's being requested.
There's three separate plans that were submitted showing three different locations on the site for that fire truck turning radii.
And we used that as the template.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we have that discussed, and it's in the record, and everybody's aware of that. That's fine.
Now, I'm going to open the public hearing at the moment, just to move things forward a little bit. And I'm wishing to see if by raise of hands, who would like to speak in reference to this application? We have three or four people who wish to speak. I will recognize them in order. I'm just asking you to sit back for a couple of minutes.
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, I will invite these folks up. Present whatever their comments might be. I'm going to start way in the back this evening. For you. Yes, please come up, introduce yourself, and you can ask us any question. Oh, yes.
All right.
I'm Diane McCarthy. I'm vice chair of the Gostown School Board, and I'm just here quickly. I want to take a moment just to voice our concerns about this project as it pertains to the population at our elementary schools. I've seen your numbers. I know what you expect to bring as far as the student count coming in. But the situation at Bartlett Elementary in particular, as well as Maple Avenue, but this is Bartlett School District, it's very real. We have exceeded capacity for years. We continue to exceed capacity. You know we're working on a project to expand, but currently, we don't have that just yet. So, I do want to ask you to please take that into account as you move forward with this plan.
So, you're aware of the correspondence from Superintendent Buckley?
Likely.
And the classroom densities and the student populations that we received, I guess, this evening?
I'm not aware of anything she sent this evening.
Mark Fugere, planning consultant, referenced the density of students.
Oh, that, yes. That didn't come out this evening, though?
No.
This is the first time we've seen it tonight.
Let me clarify. They received it in their packet tonight on the table.
Okay.
As part of the package of other comments that came in from Mark Fugere and from the school district. So, we decided to put all of the comments that Stacy had previously made as part of her TRC comments.
Okay.
Along with Mark Fugere's letter and the comments back from the school district, all together for the planning board to look at tonight.
Okay, I was aware of those a few days ago. I wasn't sure about tonight.
The one question I do have for you, Brian, while representative of the school board is here. The current school impact fee for this project is what per unit?
Twenty-seven.
We just, no, we just revised the school impact fees in December.
Yes.
You know, the single-family home was six thousand something, but what is it for apartments?
The revised apartment, multifamily, three or more units per, three or more units is two-thousand-three-hundred-seventy-seven for each unit.
Okay, so the total impact fees here would be about a hundred grand?
A little over a hundred.
Okay. Everybody understands that. Now, what other impact fees does a developer also have to pay for this project? We have a highway improvement?
Yeah, there's a road impact fee, there's a recreation impact fee, and there's highway safety impact fee, and... No, there's no sewer impact fee. Well, you have to pay a sewer connection fee separately, yes.
Separately.
But that's not an, that's not an impact fee. My calculation was that the school impact fee would be totaling at hundred, one-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-ninety-six dollars. The road impact fee would total at thirty-seven-thousand-seven-twenty-eight. And that the recreation impact fee would total at forty-eight thousand. And I actually didn't calculate the other one. The public safety is very similar to the road impact fee. It's seven-hundred-and-thirty-two versus seven-hundred-and-eighty-six per unit. No, actually, you know what? I'm sorry. I have to recalculate my road impact fee because that one is actually, and the recreation impact fee because I was looking at the single-family number.
But anyways, there's a whole series of impact fees.
Couple hundred thousand.
I'll tell you what the fee is for multifamily. It's two-hundred-and-seventy for recreation. So, it'll actually be about a quarter of what I told you, forty-eight thousand, so it'll be about twelve, over twelve, a little over twelve thousand. Multifamily for roads would be four-eighty-two per unit, which is a little over half of what I told you. So, maybe in the range of twenty thousand.
Okay. Now, the value of the property when constructed is what? How many square feet in the project?
Fifty...
Fifty-five?
Yeah.
Is about five and a half million, or thereabouts.
I'm certainly not disputing the revenue. I am simply trying to share with you, as I know you are aware.
I am.
Space is a concern. Student count is a very real concern, and we need to consider it as we move forward.
And I agree. But I also have a concern with the fact that when we review the school impact fees, we reviewed a very scientific approach as to the density of students per unit based upon its use. Unfortunately, you have the experience of one that is a supported income property on the front of this that is probably exceeding that number by its hundred percent.
That definitely did. It definitely did. But my point here tonight, like I said, I did review the numbers. I know what you're expecting. I've looked at the experience with Morgan Estates. I've looked at the experience with Timberwood. I've also compared the experience with Oakwood. My point is, right now, our elementary schools are far beyond capacity. This isn't about point seven students. This is about getting just ten more students in the building at this time. That's all. It's just at this time, and we really need to look at that.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
Without question, because I've been to both schools recently.
It is. It's an issue.
But I just wanted you to understand that we did do a scientific approach as a board.
I know.
To try to arrive at numbers, and we don't always have the experience ratios because you experience the reality of things. We don't. And I do thank you for telling us that. I know there's a lot of children there.
Yeah.
Because two of my boys have friends that live there, so I know how many kids are there. But thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Any members of the board have a question? Now's the time to ask one. I mean, the school impact is the big thing here. You're being asked to consider it based upon the density of apartments. Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who's next? Yes, ma'am? I should know your name, but I don't. Please introduce yourself.
I'm Donna Curran, and I am a parent of a student at Bartlett and have had other children go through as well. And it is my concern, as well as this past woman who came up, that forty-eight units will create more of an impact on Bartlett in an already overcrowded situation there. I took a tour of the school last week, Mr. Busquet, who does a wonderful job there. I wasn't aware, even as a parent who's been there for several years, that we have our special ed there in three separate rooms. I believe it's a physical, emotional, and then there's one room, a very small room, that houses three different therapies at one time. And to think that there will be more students coming and possibly special ed students that will have to utilize the services there as well, I think it's a disservice to them to have to be put in those situations, especially in the situation of where you have three services happening simultaneously. And off the top of my head, I cannot remember the three services, but services that should be done without distractions because these children cannot, you know, handle the distractions, and that's why some of them are in these. But as a parent, I am very concerned about the impact on our schools with this coming up. And if I read it correctly, I'm also part of the building committee. I was asked as a parent to become part of the building committee this past summer, and I'm very uneducated as far as the town politics and stuff, but one of the things I read was, I think I read correctly, is the budget committee is not even recommending the additions to both Bartlett and Maple Ave this coming voting in March. And my question at the last meeting was, do the committees not speak to one another? Because if here you all are trying to maybe look at adding forty-eight more apartments, and then, you know, people are saying we maybe shouldn't, economy-wise, whatever it means, to okay this, these plans for Maple Ave and Bartlett. I just, as a, just a basic taxpayer, you know, voter in town, been here for twenty years, I wasn't aware of all these different things, and I'm getting to be more aware of them, I guess, probably a good thing. But I'm just wondering if just the basic voter is aware of all these various things going on. So, that's just my concern. Again, as a parent of a child there, I am very concerned about adding more of an impact to the already small classrooms and crowding.
Okay.
Okay.
Members of the board have any questions of the speaker? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
John, did I pass you by?
Well, I did have a, ma'am?
Well, go ahead and ask the question. Go ahead.
What would be the, what would be the remedy for this? Because eventually, whether this project happens or not, we're going to have more growth somewhere in the town. I mean, what would be the solution to this if we have this now, or we have something else later?
The general scenario on economic recovery is multifamilies first are followed by single-family home developments. Because as the economy improves and people move into apartments, they eventually want to outgrow into single-family homes. And so, when you see economic recovery and development, multifamily apartments of various types are usually the first to come with a recovery situation. I think that's what you're seeing, not just in this town, but in many of the communities here in New Hampshire.
Yeah, part of it is, is the depressed housing market that we have makes homeownership not as attractive and affordable and a reality to people, that renting is more of a reality, and that's part of what's behind this.
So, there's a, there's a demand for this type of housing today. But that will probably change again, as it has in the past, to something else in the future. And remember now, we have probably several hundred undeveloped house slots in town or unbuilt upon, approved, house slots in town as we sit here today. So, we already have a backlog of that list kinds of things available, and nothing's happening at the moment or not progressively picking up. There were some more hands. Jason, come on up.
Jason Sacks, Blackbrook Road. I had two questions. I guess, one is, I want to make sure the board was aware of this project's buildable area. Is that on the plan somewhere? Because one of the density requirements for dwelling units refers to the buildable area and the definition in the zoning ordinance excludes steep slopes, power line easements, and the inner fifty feet of the wetland conservation district. So, I know this is a dense project, and it just needs to meet the town regulations for, the table of dimensional regulations in the zoning ordinances says that for a mixed-use project, the commercial development has ten dwell units per acre. That was one concern. My other concern, I guess, is to echo some of the concerns that the board members have mentioned about this being a waiver on the, not a waiver, a conditional use permit to exceed fifty percent residential square footage. I guess, and then there's some talk about other communities having a much higher percentage residential than commercial. I would be okay with that as a taxpayer if Gostown had more commercial zone land or land that was suitable for commercial development, but we have so limited developable area in our commercial and industrial zones that this just seems like the wrong place to set that aside, say, "Well, okay, this project, you know, let's let it be seventy or eighty percent residential." We, this project, this area of the property, you know, who knows what it could support in commercial development? That's not going to happen because this is residential development. So, I think that either the applicant or the property owner is pushing this idea of mixed use a little bit too much, in my opinion, and would ask that you, when you consider the mixed-use conditional use permit, that you do not find that it doesn't cause, I think it does cause excessive fragmentation of the commercial district, that it's a small enough district in town that whatever couple of acres this takes away from is considered fragmentation, and would hope that you would not grant that not grant that conditional use permit. Thank you.
Members of the board have any questions of the speaker? I have just one question. I've never thought about this buildable area. Has that been checked and verified?
You have a note on your plan, the same page as the other one that we were looking at. It's number four, density calc- It's number four, density calculations.
Yeah. But that, is that the whole project or just this site?
Well, the density calculations, if I may, are, according to your development regs, are calculated two different ways in a mixed-use development. One, using the ten units, dwelling units per acre of the mixed-use development as a whole. And the second being one dwelling unit per fifteen, fifteen dwelling units per acre of just the portion that you're developing. Whichever is less, you take that number of. So with this case, and that's what that explains down at the bottom, the lesser number is taken.
That's density.
Yeah.
I'm interested in the buildable area. And is it the buildable area that governs density or is it the gross site area?
It's the buildable area, and that's listed in four.
It notes that, mixed-use development, buildable area. For the back lot that we're putting, which one is the lot that we're working on, the three point?
Three point three acre, I believe.
So you're applying your density factor to the entire development, but not this site alone? You're, you're coming up with your total number of units based upon the total development?
Correct, because that's how the development regulations read. If you look in
Okay, all right. I'm just, I'm trying to get a feel for this. Okay, thank you. Tim?
Well, I think we should consider the fact that this lot was subdivided from the parent lot. So are you going to allow them to take advantage of the parent lot for calculations when it is now a standalone lot? The developer, the, the group came in and asked for it to be subdivided. We did not require that. So therefore, we might want to consider whether we are going to allow the whole project to be considered part of the buildable area, because it is not part of the original project anymore. It's its own lot.
Even, oh, sorry. Even based at, oh, sorry.
Bill, did you have something you could say?
No, not at this moment.
Okay, go ahead, Nicole.
Even based at that three point three buildable areas, if you multiply that by fifteen, that gives you forty-nine point five. So we still would meet that requirement, no matter how, which way you look at it.
Okay, that's the explanation I'm looking for. Tim?
But do we, do we do not, we, we remove steep slopes from those calculations, correct?
Correct.
Well, I'm assuming someone checked the calculations of steep slopes, easements, and lot lines.
Wetland buffers included in that?
Yeah, wetland buffers included. So all that has to come out of that site. You're telling me that what we have left on this site is three point three acres after you take all that out?
Yes.
Okay?
Yeah, our steep slopes are actually within our conservation easement, so.
Okay. Jason, you had a question though, after your presentation. I'll let you ask that.
I guess I would, I would question, the zoning ordinance is pretty clear. It says in the, in the footnote for the table of dimensional regulations, reduce residential density for mixed-use properties from the normal with not, not mixed-use development, fifteen dwelling units per acre to ten unit dwelling units per acre. So I don't see how this applicant can use fifteen dwelling units per acre on a mixed-use property. I mean, this is either a mixed-use development or it isn't. And if it is, then it's ten dwelling units per buildable acre. So I, I don't see where in the zoning ordinance it tells you to take two calculations in the greater or lesser or whatever. It seems pretty clear to, to me.
Okay. I'm not sure I understand that, Jason, but we'll work on it. Yes, sir, you have the floor.
Dave Pierce, Twenty-One Mill Street. I'm on the Board of Directors for the Gulfstown, Friends of the Gulfstown Rail Trail. Our organization, nonprofit, we have a goal to facilitate and encourage the town to develop the rail trail and participate in where appropriate and with volunteer activities. I'm, when I learned last week that the access lane into the development site is going to be widened for a formal bike lane, I immediately thought that the development of the, just a hundred feet away from this, the end of this access lane is our town's trailhead on Moose Club Park Road. It would be extremely important to enhance the, the appearance of that trailhead and to professional standards, which the town has made a plan for. And I'm, I'm very encouraged that the developer for this site realizes that the, to enhance the value of their property is, would be in his benefit to enhance the appearance of the trailhead that's just a hundred feet away and is willing to contribute money towards that end. So I encourage this board to, to accept that condition in the plan. And I will do my role in Friends of the Rail Trail to encourage the town to properly spend that money in the development of that trailhead. I anticipate there would be just a hundred feet on either side of the paved road, Moose Club Park Road, for that trailhead to be formally developed. And, and where appropriate, some parking for our residents as well. Ask you to accept that condition in the development of this plan.
Members of the board, have any questions?
I do have a question.
Yes, call us.
I'm glad you stepped up, Dave, because I didn't articulate my concern with the bike path. It seems to be that there's a missing link between connecting the bike path to the rail trail along Moose, are you going to, and again, I'm looking at this, and I assume this is where the road comes out. How's the connection going to be made between the bike path and the rail trail? Is there going to be a widened portion along Moose Club Park Road so that you can come from the bike path down to the rail trail?
As you exit this proposed driveway, there's perhaps twenty-five feet of Moose Club Park Road before you hit a driveway for another residence.
Right.
And then immediately after that driveway, it's town land, rail trail corridor.
This is across Moose Club Park Road from the driveway entrance, no?
The trailhead is on the same side.
And I'm looking, I'm looking at this.
Yes.
Your, your sketch.
And, and there's two curved lines which represent this proposed driveway from the forty-eight unit.
Yeah, yeah, I see that.
They're just going to ride on the road or what else?
Yeah.
They're going to drive on, ride on Moose Club Park with the rest of the population.
So they're going to, they're going to come down the bike path, and then for a short distance, they'll ride on Moose Club Park Road.
Yes, for
They got down the trail. Okay, that's, that's where I want to be. So there's kind of a missing link there.
But the, the, the trail going towards Manchester has been fully developed except for the first eighty feet.
Yeah.
And it's rather, doesn't appear very well, just an open gravel area. It could be professionally developed and professionally landscaped and perhaps some parking, not as much as I've shown on that plan you're looking at. And as well as the trailhead coming back towards, towards the west. The first hundred feet professionally developed and landscaped with, with bollards to prevent vehicles from access. And the eight thousand dollars that the developer is willing to provide the town to enhance the appearance of this trailhead would be, in my estimate, take care of the situation very well. And I would encourage this board to accept that condition.
Thank you. Anybody else wish, is speaking about the project? Yes, sir, Mr. Bovare.
I guess you all know my name.
Oh, I do. I don't know about anybody else.
Now we do, for the record.
For the record.
Yes, my name is Bovare, and I live at sixty-four Moose Club Park Road. My concern is regarding the easement. I give that gratis, no charge. Now, they're going to make no provision to get to the back part of my land, which could be billable. So I gave them the access. They can't give me an access, but it's still my land. But they could make provisions, not having a rail or a wall, whatever it is, so I can get to this back part. That's my concern. And this is probably true of our neighbor. She probably would like to, and she's here tonight, like to get to the back part of her land with possibilities of probably building another house. So my question, what can be done about this?
I'm not sure.
That's what I'm asking.
Carol?
Mr. Chair, could I, could I ask you, Mr. Bovare, how much land you own?
There's a lot of wetland, but I probably own the buildable land of, I mean, Brian, do you know how much buildable land we have?
Probably five or six acres.
At least, at least. Thank you.
Okay. It's, it's the, in the overall plan, I think it's the large lot entitled eighteen dash fifty-eight B dash one on your cover sheet of your drawing.
Is that the resident to the left or the right of this driveway?
As you're facing the driveway, it's the residence to the left.
The resident to the right may be interested also.
Okay, yeah, resident to the left, as you can see.
Ryan?
And I spoke to Nicole briefly about this prior to the meeting, after I spoke to you earlier today. And it's our belief that this development couldn't necessarily restrict Mr. Bovare from accessing his property off of this easement area because it's his property and he granted this easement for, you know, access to other people. But that shouldn't restrict him from being able to access his property from that area as well. So
What you're saying is this driveway, up to a certain point where it's on his property, he would have the right to have access to that driveway?
Correct.
If he, if he could manage it?
If, if, if he could manage it. Now, you know, their, their thought is to possibly, you know, subdivide their lot into, you know, smaller lots behind there and be able to possibly have those lots developed. One of those, one of the concerns with doing that would be that those lots wouldn't have access onto a public roadway. And so that would be, that would have to be a consideration made by the planning board at that time. However, you know, I think the point remains that access still would be allowed as long as he can, you know, engineer it to tie into that driveway.
It's like access on this driveway to this project. It's an easement access. We've allowed access to that landlocked piece of property. I think it's within our purview to be able to do that. Tim?
So if Mr. Bovare would like to access his property, Brian, since it does not have frontage, would that be a zoning issue?
It'd be some kind of variance.
Variance from ZBA.
Right. He may have to get a variance prior to come into the planning board for, to be, to be able to do any lots.
Be sure, because you said the planning board could make the decision. It actually begins with a ZBA.
Right, it would.
Comes to the planning board after.
It would eventually come to the planning board.
Mr. Tucker?
I'm familiar with that easement. And the easement in and of itself, Mr. Bovare, provides that, once that's built, you can have access to it. So the reserve, the right for you to do that is right in the easement.
Well, my concern is that they're going to build a wall or guardrail and
Only a portion of
If they would make it.
Address the board, please, Mr. Bovare.
I'm sorry. My concern is when they build driveway, whatever it is, that there'd not be a guardrail or a wall there, but that they'd sort of leave an opening so I could get, otherwise, if I do or can make this into some, or lots, it would be more difficult for me to remove whatever barrier there is to get to the land.
Mr. Chairman? I, I think the, the retaining wall starts at about station three fifty, and that's, you know, fairly well up to steepness of that road before that retaining wall starts. So it'd be a graded slope on the side of the driveway up to that point. The retaining wall starts at, I think it's station three fifty and goes to station nine hundred. Yes?
In regards to your comment about the guardrail, you can't leave a gap in the guardrail because it'd be a safety issue while it was not, prior to it becoming a driveway. If you couldn't leave a gap in there, because if someone could drive through, they could drive over the wall. So it would have to be there until such a time as you would try to build a driveway out of any section of that driveway.
But if they made some sort of provision so I don't have to break it, yes, I know it's a safety issue, but maybe they could barricade it some way. I don't know.
I, I think, to answer your question, there's a certain kind of safety situation on this driveway that we have to have in place. A portion of that can be removed if there's an intersecting driveway that meets grade wise. Okay? And now I'll leave it to Mr. Tucker. You have anything to add to that?
The other issue is where that retaining wall is, and Nicole can correct me if I'm wrong. One of the primary reasons for the retaining wall, as opposed to just sloping it off, is that the retaining wall keeps us out of the wetlands. So where that is, you can't, you couldn't slope it anyway.
The chances of, what, what he's saying there, Mr. Bovare, is that the chances are with every retaining wall is, in the closest proximity of the wetlands, you wouldn't be allowed access at that point anyways. So you'd have access at the lower end of that driveway, probably from the wetland standpoint alone. That's going to be a, a limiting factor for you.
I have, like we said, five or six acres that is buildable, is not wetland.
I understand. But where that retaining wall is, is fair, is there to stay out of the wetlands. And let me assure you that the wetlands are in close proximity to the base of that retaining wall. So the chances of you getting approval to tie in at where that retaining wall is and in the proximity of the wetlands is not very good. And the best point for access is probably going to be on the lower end of that driveway towards Moose Club Park Drive or Road.
Say my driveway would be an extension?
I'm not sure. But I think an engineering consultant is going to be your best bet here in terms of determining where is the best access and how your property might be best subdivided for future use as you see fit.
Exactly. That's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak? I know there's other people in the audience just smiling and thinking about this project, so. You have something to say, you have the opportunity now. Okay, seen that. Oh, excuse me. Come right up here. Don't be bashful. Introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Josie.
Your last name?
Moran.
Okay.
And I'm at sixty-two Moose Club, which is the other side.
Is that the one with the driveway close to where this
Yes.
new access point is? Okay, all right.
It is.
What would you like to tell us or ask us?
In the same venue as Mr. Bovare, we also had the, the, possibly have the opportunity of opening up one of those lots and subdividing and building, but we need access through that driveway. So we are questioning pretty much the same thing as Mr. Bovare. How can we gain access to that driveway to develop another single-family home in the back?
Are the lot, are the lot lines on our
Is that part of our easement as well?
Yeah. Are the lot lines on our print for where this lot goes this way though? I see the pin here. Which way does it go from that pin?
I, I would like to have someone show us. It's a very weird-shaped lot.
Yep.
This is the hundred-foot PSH power line, so that wouldn't be considered buildable area all through here. So basically what she has is this area in here.
The entire one side?
The question is to subdivide off the top half of the lot with access to this driveway, would she have the potential of creating an additional house lot? I don't know, based upon lot size requirements, et cetera. And I don't know whether you have a right of access either. That would be something you'd have to determine. But Tim, you had a question?
Can that, if something is a D to easement for sloping and grading, can you build in a sloping and grading easement? Let's look at the big arc on the print that shows where the sloping and grading easements are. Let's look at the big arc on the print that shows where the sloping and grading easements are.
That was something determined by deed, I'm not sure if the total grade.
It's on the print, we're talking about buildable areas, I'm just wondering.
I'm not sure.
I think it's more of a temporary, so it's a temporary construction easement, and correct me if I'm wrong, Bill.
Says slope and grade easement.
That's to benefit.
This driveway.
This lot, it doesn't restrict the lot owner from doing anything.
Well, the word easement is there, sometimes I read easement.
How's the easement worded, Brian?
The wording of the easement for the driveway contains additional language allowing, in the construction of the driveway, to build and maintain slopes off to each side of it beyond the dedicated fifty feet.
Is that a cut area in that section or is that a fill area?
It's a cut area, I believe.
But it doesn't, but it doesn't take the whole easement if you look at the grading plan of the driveway.
No, I'm reading.
It's considerably less than the easement area.
I just wonder if it's a cut or a fill area. But the language of the easement, does it preclude structures erected within the grade slope easement?
No. It doesn't prohibit structures within the slope areas.
So, it's a fill.
As long as someone, you know, would be able to.
Going into the road.
The best answer to that question.
So, it's a cut.
Is you need to consult with an engineer to see what your opportunities are. This board can't sit here and say yes or no without a definitive plan prepared by an engineer, or at least a conceptual design, or the developer wishes to speak, and I'll let him have the floor for a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You would have no objection to them tying into our driveway, but I think that the underlying fee still lies with Mr. Bovier. So, any easement to gain access to it, I think would come from him and not from us.
Okay, all right. I don't know the situation, okay? The best we can say is if you came before this board, you'd get, do consideration for a proposal that you might present. I just don't know, in all fairness, of whether you would be allowed to do it or not. Members of the board? Till we see something where we can't do anything. Could encourage you to investigate though, please. Tim?
But are these two speakers asking us to create provisions and the conditions for them to be allowed to access their property? Or, or is that a right that they have?
I, I don't believe we can.
By way of the deed?
I don't believe, we have a right to impose that on the applicant.
That's why I'm asking the question. Because it sounds like these two speakers are asking us to create a condition that allows them to access this access road, even though the developer has clearly stated that they have that right, so.
I, I don't believe that we have the opportunity to do that.
I'm just making, trying to make it clear.
As a condition even. Imposes a condition that may already exist by some other means. Carl?
One of the questions I had for yourself, if I may, with regards to your lot, do you currently have an easement? Are you, you've granted them an easement?
Fifty foot.
Fifty foot easement?
That was granted by Mr. Bovier.
Okay. So, their lot. What about the grading easement? The, this slope and grading easement that appears to be on your land?
That was on her land before she purchased the property.
Okay, that's, that's, I just wanted to make sure she understood it was, it's on, in your deed, that that easement exists.
Just, what we might do, just.
Yes, Phil?
On here, it's listed, book and page right on the plan. You might, for yourself, take that book and page number and get a copy of it for yourself.
And I would, I would certainly make a trip to the planning department and visit Brian.
Yes.
And compare with him to see if he's got any useful information or ideas that might help you in making an informed decision.
Okay. On a side note, if I can.
Sure.
The driveway, or the road, or what the driveway we're going to call it, you had mentioned that you would put possibly signage for speed, like twenty miles per hour or fifty miles per hour. I don't know if that's a possibility, but I am quite close to that driveway and I can just see people driving down that driveway relatively quickly if there's no.
I can see my boy riding a skateboard down there.
Yep. Speed bump or speed limit, or I don't know what, so, I don't know, that's just my little comment on that.
That's, that's already in there.
Oh, good.
Bearing in mind that it's a private road and the town does, has no jurisdiction.
Well, yeah.
Driver.
Highway. And the town has no.
And the town has no jurisdiction over any speed limit signs or any.
I know, so they're there and basically people can do what they want, but I can just see it now.
There is a stop sign and stop line.
At the bottom.
At the end of that driveway too, so.
Oh, absolutely, people are going to stop because they would end up in the river. But I'm just saying that just from the top going down, I can see it happen, the speeding, that's my concern.
Just remember, there's a management group that runs this place, and if it becomes a problem, you need to contact them.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Thank you. Carl?
Mr. Chair, I just had a response to Mr. Sax's concern, Jason Sax. Brian, you may, can, you turn to page twenty-three of the dimensional regulations, I just.
I'm there.
You are there. The bottom of the table, near the number, there's two asterisks, it says reduced, reduce residential density for mixed-use purposes. I don't know if that's where he's getting that number where you go fifteen dwelling units to ten dwelling units per acre.
Yep. Yes. And that, could you address that, please? Just, I would say, I mean, it, it's really a determination of whether the board wants to consider this a mixed-use project or just a regular project built in the commercial district. Either way, though, if you look at the table, it, it, it's as Nicole had stated, the maximum number of dwelling units per buildable acre for duplex and multifamily lots, that column, if you look at the commercial row, it's fifteen dwelling units per acre. So, if it's just multifamily being built in the commercial district, not a mixed-use project or anything like that.
This is not commercial district.
This is. Yes, it is. This is the commercial district.
That's why we have to have the mixed use.
I stand corrected, I apologize.
If, if it were multifamily built in the commercial district just by itself, no mixed-use project, you're just calling it a multifamily project. It would be fifteen dwelling units per acre.
Okay. I think we've settled that issue, hopefully. I think we have the proper reference.
Make sure, Mr. Sax.
Yes, ma'am. You have the floor for a second. Come on up. I don't know who you are.
Lorraine Bovier.
Okay, I do know who you are.
And it may just be a small thing to some, but I'm concerned about the traffic flow on Mass Road. When I, they first proposed this in, well, two thousand eight, whenever it was, they assured us that there would be no problem with that, they would make sure the lights all coordinated and everything. But I've noticed over the years that, that even when you, when you're driving down there, there's nobody turning left either way, all the lights turn red and you have to wait, the Mass Road traffic, which is the main road, has to wait for nothing. And I can imagine what it's like when it's busy in nighttime and in the morning, that it really slows things up. So, I don't see why they couldn't coordinate the lighting better, traffic lights better.
I'm sure, based upon your note, that the public works department will take notice of that and address it accordingly.
Thank you.
I think Megan can.
Yeah, I just wanted to state for the record that the lights were originally coordinated when Rite Aid was installed. But during the recent Mass Road sewer project, all the lights that that project intercepted were cut. The loops were cut, and so they were temporary loops installed months and months after they were cut. So, they, they functioned, you know.
Half-pastly.
As originally intended for several months. And then when we realized that the road was not going to get paved this year, temporary loops were installed late fall this year. Some tweaks were made to get them functioning as best we could, but permanent loops are proposed after the road is paved.
Okay.
So, it should be back to its original function.
Okay. Jason?
Very briefly, with regard to the mixed use thing, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but on page ten, the permitted uses table, the only way that dwelling units is part of, or, multifamily dwelling units are not permitted without variance in the commercial zone. So, in order to get dwelling units as part of, as in the commercial zone, they have to be through a mixed, a mixed-use project, which would mean that it's ten, develop, ten units per developable acre, or the applicant would have to get a variance for it not to be considered part of a mixed-use project. So, I, maybe I'm missing something, but it seems like it's pretty clear that this has to be ten units per, per buildable acre because it's a mixed-use project, and if it's not a mixed-use project, then it's not permitted without variance. So, I don't know, that's just my interpretation.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. I'm believing at this moment that everybody in the audience, the public, has had an opportunity to speak. I will still allow interference as we discuss some of these issues. And I will allow the applicant an opportunity to address anything they've heard or wish to address at this time before I close the public hearing or take some other administrative action on this application. Tim?
Do we formally close the public hearing or is it?
No, not yet.
I mean, it stays open from meeting to meeting, right?
It's, it'll stay open. I don't know what, I'm going to poll the board to find out what they would like to do this evening, whether they want to adjudicate this or whether they want to think about it. There's been a lot presented this evening and I, I want to hear from the applicant a little bit.
Mr. Chair?
Brian?
Nicole was just wanting me to point out the, the way that the density calculation is set up. And our development regulations specify that, it's on page eighty-five of the development regulations. And basically talks about applied density. And it gives an example, at the bottom of the page, on the, on the left-hand side, the, the last paragraph starts, "For example, a two-acre site in the Village Commercial District, the zoning ordinance would allow a maximum of thirty units at fifteen dwelling units per acre. For a mixed-use project, the maximum would be twenty units at ten units per acre. If, however, the non-residential use utilized fifty percent of the site and the residential use was not to be above the non-residential, fifty percent of the site would be the actual residential buildable area. Applying the development regulations standards for apartments, the site would support fifteen units. The site plan would therefore be judged relative to these fifteen units in lieu of the twenty allowed by zoning." So, I don't know if you can picture, picture any of that in your head.
On note number four, that's, that's why we included note number four in the density calculations, it's calculated both ways. It's calculated one as the fifteen acres over the mixed-use development, the fifteen dwelling units per acre over the mixed-use development. And then it's calculated at the ten dwelling unit per acre ratio for just the residential portion. That's what it's saying, and it's saying to take the lesser of the two numbers. In this case, it happens to be.
Hundred, hundred and eight.
The fifteen dwelling units per acre is, ratio is the lesser amount. And that's all broken out in, in, in number four, so.
Now, I, I am willing to assume, based upon this discussion, that the applicant is correct, Brian?
I can recall, if I may, when this first started, we read this thing through and put pen to pencil, and then we went in and we met with Brian and we said, okay, let's make sure we're all on the same wavelength and we're all calculating this in the same manner before we take another step forward. We probably spent an hour in your office making sure we read every word and, and got it right, am I correct?
Yeah.
So, it's interpretation of staff in consultation with the applicant that the density factors are correct and allowable under the ordinance, lest there's some other paragraph or assumption that we're missing here. Members of the board? Because I want to stop this discussion on density if that's the case.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I don't think we should rule out Jason's testimony here because he makes sense on his side of the argument too. And whether Brian decides that he reads it, the thing his way and Jason reads it another way, it has to be decided by the, by consensus of this board, who, who they, what you're going to do here. And I think we'll get to that when we deliberate on it. Okay. But I'm not saying rule out what Jason has brought to the table.
Okay. All right. I'm glad I'm not the jury. Anyways. All right, so, do you have anything you would like to add before we try to figure out what we're going to do here?
I don't think we've completed the presentation.
Okay, you, you still have the floor.
We just went up with initial. The waivers, just to go back to the waivers, the waivers that were requested because we're going with the private driveway are for relief from the loading requirements. The loading requirements for this, it's a residential site, so you're going to be, your loading is going to be your UPS truck and occasionally a moving truck. We do have, the moving trucks for this size units, they, they don't have storage areas. So, it's, it's going to be your small U-Haul or Ryder truck, it's, that could fit in a, a parking space or two. You're not going to have a big box truck, delivery truck in this, in this area, so we are asking for relief on that. The other thing is, of course, the, the waiver for, to allow this to be a driveway instead of a private road. And then the last waiver would be to allow this driveway to have a width greater than twenty-two feet, which is in the purview of the planning board. And that is mainly because of life safety. The fire department was really adamant about having at least twenty-four feet to fit his ladder truck in it. He said they do have a tail end that extends further than their wheels and they wanted to make sure that, one, that wasn't going to hit any guardrails, and two, he'd be able to fit on that road without blocking other traffic. And do you want us to go on to the conditional uses?
I mean, we can go crazy and do it twice. I want to do it once. So, I'll allow you the opportunity to speak as we cover each one, rather than try to remember what everybody says. Take one at a time. Does the board agree with that scenario? To make it a little easier to do one at a time? But I also would like to start with the waivers because the waivers might impact some of our other concerns, is that a great consideration? And in order to do any adjudication, I'm going to have to close the public hearing, so I'm going to poll the board. You want to close the public hearing or you want to leave it open? But what's your pleasure on this project?
Do you still present the conditional use?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, shouldn't we address the conditional uses so that if the public wants to comment on our presentation, they can? I'd love not to have to do that, but.
I said, I thought I said earlier, as we did each one of these, technically, can't reopen it without a vote.
Yeah, how do you close the public hearing but then allow for a public comment after that? I would propose that you.
Because we run by Yatton's rules.
I would propose.
In fairness to everybody.
I would propose that you leave it, leave, leave it open and let them present the conditional use permits. And then if there's any comment from the public at, at that time, maybe take that in and then close the public hearing and deliberate after that.
But are we closing the public hearing for the duration of this application or can we reopen it at a later date?
You can reopen it tonight if you close it tonight.
It hasn't been closed.
Well, if you, if you close the public hearing and this meeting just, does not make a decision tonight, we have to reopen the public hearing at the next meeting.
No, we don't.
We would have to re-notify in order to reopen a public hearing.
Or we continue it.
Or we can continue it to a date certain.
If you continue a meeting, you don't have to reopen the public hearing.
We can do it right now.
You don't have to re-notice.
That's correct.
If you continue prior to closing the public hearing, then you don't have to re-notify for a public hearing at the next meeting.
Long as we continue the application.
Now, it is ten minutes at ten. And the rate we're going, we'll be here at eleven-thirty.
No, we won't.
No, we won't.
We'll adjourn before that. We'll adjourn before that.
Well, that's why I'm asking, do we want to start on this thing tonight? Because I'd rather get it done, but if it's the board's pleasure to make sure we give this thing careful consideration before we take action on it, I would bow to the board. I'll go around the tables. Phil?
I'm not comfortable we're going forward with it tonight.
Steve?
I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other. I think we have time to give it careful consideration, but I'd also be open to taking some more time.
John?
I think after ten o'clock, ten-thirty, eleven o'clock, people start to get a little mushy, and our decisions might not be, uh, what they would be at seven o'clock.
Okay. I would suggest we, uh, hold off, we wait till the March meeting, have all the issues that are outstanding be addressed in regards to the, the wall as well, so Megan has a, a chance to look at the wall, retaining wall, so I would push it out a month.
Tim?
I think we should, um, I do not want to decide this tonight.
Carlos?
I'd like to hold off and start deliberations fresh, we all like fresh mornings. Give us some time to look at this density issue. This is a big issue, the density issue, I'd like to have some time to look at that before we get into deliberations. So, are you in favor of waiting?
Mo?
I'd be here all night, I don't care.
Oh, I could at eight o'clock.
Now, I have, I have one concern, and it's for her.
I may not be here next meeting, so...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I be recognized? Do you have a, a February twenty-third meeting scheduled with the Joint Board of Selectmen, Southern New Hampshire Planning, and whoever the HDR is?
That's really close timing.
Why don't we move them out? If we, if we can come back here on February twenty, the third, which is in two weeks, we can work on this some more.
She doesn't have two weeks.
Well, I, it's not, that's not my decision. March eighth is even farther.
Yeah, but...
We, we can't decide this based on those, those conditions, so.
Okay. Is there anything we can do this, tonight, quickly and easily? Can we do the waivers?
What would help the applicant, uh, either move along with some, I mean, you're asking, you know, could we get input from them, what would help them continue to move along in a way that, um, allows them? I mean, is there something we could do, is something you would like, rather than try to decide what we'd like? What's, what's best for the applicant?
Let's the applicant have a chance to speak here.
Yeah.
Mr. Tucker?
If I may, I guess I'm not sensing what the real issues are. We need to have votes on the waivers, and then we need to go through the conditional use permits, which at least when I walked in here, I thought were pretty straightforward. I, I don't know what big issues are in your minds or you're concerned about, and I guess if we're not gonna hear this tonight, we'd like to know what the concerns are, so that we may prepare for them and address them and...
That's a reasonable request. Carl?
My, my personal concerns are similar to Phil's with regards to phasing of this project when it was approved in two thousand and eight, and other obligations that the applicant at that time was asked to do, and are they, are there still obligations out there outstanding that have not been done? I would like that addressed.
Tammy?
I, um, have an email here from Stacy Buckley. She and the school board chairman are questioning, uh, the planning, Bogart Planning Development's numbers based on the available students that are gonna be coming out of this project, and I think that also has to be addressed. The school board was here to speak to that, and we have documentation here to back that up.
Carlos, any particular concerns?
No, I think we covered, hit on the big ones.
Yeah. Mo?
Um, I would agree. I think the school is definitely something to think about, but, you know, there is other very large developments in the works, you know, that seventy-six lot subdivision off of Bog Road or something like that. So, there's gonna be other larger projects coming up. So, I think the school issue is gonna just reappear over and over again, um...
And I have to agree with that, because from personal knowledge, I think we're gonna see more multifamily applications in this town in the near future. I think it's inevitable, but I'm aware of a couple that are preliminary at best. John? You got any particular concerns about the project that you're unsure about, or, or would like to have the applicant provide, you know, give additional consideration?
I don't have, I don't have any. I've seen the drawings, I've been, we've been talking about this for months. You know, they, they do, they do a A-plus job whenever they do a project. I don't, I, I don't have any concerns, and I'm sure they'd work with us along the way if something popped up.
Just remember, John, there's no along the way.
Well, I, I understand that. Then I have no concerns with this. I have no concerns with this project.
We have, we have staff and engineering that will see to it that it's complied with or, and/or modified correctly.
Right, I, okay, then I have no problems with this.
Steve?
I don't have anything new to add to the list.
Okay. Phil?
One of the things I have in addition to what was mentioned is how we, how we look at this for the purpose of the conditional use, as to whether or not we look at this, since it's been subdivided, as to whether or not we look at this as a project by itself. And part of, part of my rationale for that is, all along throughout this entire project, this was proposed as multifamily, this, this portion of the project. Uh, you know, it's separate from the rest of the project, the location of it, and I think the fact that it's been subdivided off is, is an important part of that, because i- is it, y- y- you know, you, I, I had, there's a little difficulty in saying that we're gonna subdivide something, but yet we want to have the benefit of it not being subdivided. So, I, I think unless we address that, how do we go forward with any other issue, whether it's a waiver or a conditional use? Is it part of that project by itself, or is it part of the entire project?
I, I think that when the, when the project was proposed, it was a conditional use project, and it was a mixed-use project. Now, given that, there was an established location for certain entities on this site, that the form of ownership of the final properties can always be subject to some other division of property, and still apply to the original conditional use permit granted for this mixed-use for development, meaning that the original applicant can come into this board and subdivide it off as a matter of convenience to promote the project, meaning different entities might don't, different portions of the project, as required by the developer, like Rite Aid, or like the housing, as a matter of convenience, but also as to confirm whatever arrangements might have to be made for financing, tax credits, all kinds of craziness that come into play in various projects. And you're gonna see that no matter where it is. It could have easily been a condominium, and they have an established, uh, limited-use areas, just like the property line has been subdivided. There's all different kinds of ways of doing it, but it was specifically done away in accordance with the wishes of the applicant, the original applicant. Phil?
If I can address that, you very rarely find a mixed-use development project that doesn't have individually subdivided lots. To give you one that I'm in the middle of right now, where the Coppador is going in, um, at one oh one and one fourteen, that property there, that is approved as a mixed-use development in Bedford. We have subdivided that into nine lots. The Coppador is one lot, um, there's another lot for the Branch Bank, the assisted living building that's being built is on a separate lot. There are nine separately subdivided lots, but it is one approval, and the town will not, you know, separate that, except they will approve the architecture for one building at, at a time as it comes along. But it's very, you cannot have a mixed-use development of any size and not have individual lots, because you just can't finance it. It, it, it's impractical.
Yeah, go ahead, Tim.
Well, Mr. Tucker, if, if that project was presented to the Bedford Planning Board that way, then I'd say you'd be perfectly within your rights to make that argument. But this project was presented as a single-lot project, mixed-use. Somewhere along the line, yes, it was, this was all one lot in the beginning, I was here for this.
Wasn't the pharmacy a separate lot?
It was brought in, Mr. Cruz brought this in as one giant lot for the whole thing, and it was gonna be built, just like the place down in Bedford across at one oh one and Harvest Market. It was gonna be all architecturally pleasing buildings with colonial stylings. I can remember the speech, just like he said it yesterday.
I wasn't here.
Well, I was.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So, that came in as a single-lot project. Somewhere along the line, in order to accommodate neighborworks, the owner of the property decided by way of their application process to subdivide this property. So, that changed the rules a little bit, changed up the rules. Now, I believe that if you had come in here with a twenty-five lot, twenty-five-unit condominium project or apartment complex, as was presented in the very beginning, I think it probably would have been here and gone by now. But I understand the feasibility of economics. You can't pound that much money into this property to build twenty-five units. I understand that. But it's not what was here from day one, that we all talked about here, ad nauseam with Robert Cruz, and listened to the whole thing. So, there, there are lines here, respectfully saying, there are lines between what it started out as. It even got, it started out as one big project, and then it morphed into phases. All of a sudden, it's phases. We didn't know anything about that in the beginning. This whole project has changed from building to building to neighborworks to this proposition, this proposal that has changed. So, you can't just keep falling back on, well, that's what it was. It's, it, because it's not that anymore. It's something different now.
I, I wasn't here, so I can't say, but I, I, I went in and I, I've read all of the minutes, and I thought that the subdivision of the pharmacy was part of the initial approval, and that those two decisions were made simultaneously. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong, because it's my memory, I wasn't here.
I do have the notice of decision for the subdivision of the Rite Aid and the, the notice of decision for the site plan and the conditional use approval. They were on the same date.
So, they pulled this, they pulled the Rite Aid out of the original parcel? All right. Then they came back and pulled this out of the original parcel, so this has morphed.
They, yeah, they pulled the neighborworks out.
This is not the same.
Yeah, when neighborworks was subdivided off, the other, the three lots were created, the second three lots.
I mean, we, we've seen it four or five times, and it has, as you say, morphed from one to the next, and it's fairly logical, in my opinion, but that may not be the opinion of everybody.
We were led to believe that all the buildings were gonna be built in the front simultaneously. That's what was presented to us. We have all these buildings, we're gonna build all these nice buildings, then we're gonna put some housing behind it, and it's gonna be a nice mixed-use project with the parcel you're working on as part of the whole package.
Yeah, Brian?
Never happened.
Are, are we under any, uh, uh, timeframes here, in terms of prior approvals? Are we running up against the calendar dates? I don't want to get caught in the, amongst something trying to make decisions and lose, um...
Like a sixty-five-day clock, is that what you're asking on?
No, the, uh, you know, one-year, four-year. We're running up against the four-year granted right here fairly quickly.
No, I don't believe so. I mean, they, they pulled the, the permits to do the Rite Aid in the Abingdon Square, I mean, and, and that really essentially locks them into, you know...
I just want to make sure that there's no, we're not under any time constraints here.
No.
Okay, because we can, we can address that if we, we were.
Yeah, if they had gotten their site of plan approval and not done any development within the first, you know, time period, then that would have been an issue, but because they've done portions of it, then they're okay.
So, there's no flaming time schedule here?
No.
Besides the baby.
Huh?
Besides the baby.
Besides the baby.
And, you know, I do ask that we at least be able to present the conditional use, um, criteria, just so we can get your feedback on that and take it back, um, at least, at a, at a minimum, because, um, it seems like that is the big concern here, is the conditional uses, and we haven't, and everybody keeps on talking about them, but we haven't made our presentation on it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Are you asking us to discuss it, or actually you want to go through some vote on this?
We want to present it, we haven't had a chance to present it yet.
If everything, if everything was, uh, okay, and we decided everything is okay, when would this project get started? And when would this project finish?
Well, if you would have granted approval as a thirty-day right of appeal, so, we'd pick a date, February twenty-third. If you would have granted on February twenty-third, we would push out March twenty-third before we could move forward with anything. During March and April and probably May, we'd be into the bank for the financing. We'd probably start in June, and it's probably a ten-to-eleven-month build. So, it would be next spring would be the opening.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, one more que, just a quick follow-up?
You can have as many as you want, but go ahead.
Okay. Approximately how many people are gonna be employed by this project, once it's underway?
Um, construction, probably a hundred and fifty. Um, once it's, it's totally up, it'd be a property manager and a maintenance person on site.
Okay, thank you.
So, permanent jobs, temporary jobs, somewhere between a hundred and, two hundred and fifty during the first year, and then two permanent positions post, um, completion.
Thank you.
Yeah, but you'd probably have other vendors to maintain the premises and all that stuff, too.
Yeah, landscapers, um, flowers.
So, all the associated maintenance things would also keep people busy somewhere.
Good, thank you.
All right. You have the floor on conditional use permit one.
And let me start by bringing up the first thing you talked about, Mr. Chairman, and that was whether we need a new conditional use permit for the whole mixed-use facility, because we're now going over fifty percent, which is the way Brian read it. I initially thought that we would get a modification or an amendment of the existing conditional use permit to modify the provision that the gross square footage of the residential could not be larger, and that that in itself would require a conditional use permit. The way it, it, you need a conditional use permit for the mixed-use, and then, as five-point-nine-point-one says, "This maximum percentage limitation of residential use in mixed-use buildings or projects may be waived by conditional use permit, with a finding that the proposed plan is reasonable, given the physical constraints of the development sites and/or access." So, I was looking at this as, we have the conditional use permit for the mixed-use, we need to layer on top of that another conditional use permit to get more than fifty percent residential, and that that, second, or second layer of conditional use permit would in effect act as a modification of the existing one.
And you're assuming, you're telling this board they have the right to do that?
I think you do, because you have the right to modify any approval you've made. There's, if you have a, if you make a site...
We have the power to do that.
If you make a site plan approval, and two years later, the applicant comes back and wants to modify something, you can, you can modify your prior, prior approval.
I'm not sure if we can, because I can't remember it ever happening, okay? It's not because I don't know that we can do it. I don't remember in my time on this board that that has ever happened.
Specifically for a conditional use permit, you're saying, or for a site plan? Because I know there's been plenty of site plan amendment requests before you.
This one, this, uh, other project.
A conditional use permit isn't, in my opinion, no different than any other decision or approval you make. You as the board of... You is the board of the right to modify it.
All right.
But the criteria are almost exactly the same, so I can go either way.
All right. I think it's cleaner if you get a whole new conditional use permit that grants everything that you wish, but that's beside the point.
Tim. So in your legal experience, have you ever had this happen while you've been representing people? Where someone had a conditional use permit, and then they did a modification? Is something you've seen in the past, or is this, are we treading on new ground right here?
I can tell you I have not seen it. And it would only be because of this sort of layering of conditional use permits that seems to be in the ordinance that necessitates it here. But I look at it, granting a conditional use permit, as I say, is nothing more than a decision of the board, and any decision you make can later be modified if the board sees fit to do so. But I'm fully prepared to go forward in the way that Brian suggested.
In the sense, there seems to be some question, is there somebody, Brian, that we can get in touch with that will give us a reasonable idea of where we're headed with this?
I mean, I can ask our attorney if you want.
Please.
Nah.
No, I think we're... I think, I think what he's saying, I think what he's saying is you have, you have two options, and you can do it either way. He's ready to go forward either way.
It doesn't matter which presentation you want to hear.
Which one's shorter?
My approach, I think is shorter.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure we're on good, solid ground when we make a decision. That's all I care about.
Let me make the presentation. I take it you're not going to vote on these tonight, so let me make the presentation both ways, and you can decide.
You have the floor still.
Okay. So the first conditional use permit we need is for this mixed-use development, and we have to satisfy the criteria that Brian has laid out under number one. First, that the proposed plan is reasonable given the physical constraints of the development sites and access limitations. Well, clearly, we've got the Mystic Brook and the Big Gully. We've got only one possible driveway into this site. And clearly, this piece of land that is in the commercial zone is abutted on all sides except the brook by residential land. So it really is a unique appendage to what is truly commercial and developable, commercial properties. And that's why, under B, I don't believe this is excessive fragmentation of the commercial district, because it is surrounded by residential land. And by actually putting residences here, we are really creating a nice buffer between the single-family residential and the high commercial use that is on our other side, particularly with Hanaford and Shaws on both sides. All multifamily units will, of course, be served by sewer and water. The use is specifically authorized in the ordinance. Well, that's correct. It is under the Section 3.11, the table, and Section A6 there. If completed as proposed, the development will comply with all requirements of this section and conditions or standards established in the ordinance for this use. That again is correct, provided you grant us the waivers of the development regs. Are the uses compatible with the neighborhood and with adjoining or abutting uses? Down below us, down the 35 feet, we have residences. Behind us, we have the brook and a good buffer between the existing neighbor works residential portion. To our left and the right are the Shaws and the Hanaford Development. So it really is compatible with the neighborhood and acts as a good transition piece. The use will not have a substantial adverse impact on vehicular or pedestrian safety. I think that's correct. We've committed, we have submitted a traffic study, which I think addresses those points. The use will not have substantial adverse impact on the appearance or visual quality of the surrounding neighborhood. We have a nice dense buffer around this. These buildings will hardly be visible. And given the great elevation between Moose Club Park Drive and where these are, and with the vegetation that's there, and that vegetation, by the way, I drove out there, and I don't know if many of you have, but it is mostly all evergreen. It doesn't lose its buffering effect in the winter. The use will be adequately serviced by necessary public utilities and by community facilities and services sufficient capacity to ensure proper operation of the use. As Nicole mentioned, we have all public utilities here. Drainage is on-site, so we are not making an adverse impact. And I think those are, in effect, also the same criteria that we need to present with respect to the second conditional use permit.
Can I stop you right there, Bill? Any members aboard have any questions about number one, or any of the A through I comments that Attorney Tucker has made? I have one. That's I. Is community facilities and services, is that referring to, and I'm going to put the word in here, schools?
I'm not sure if that is...
Is that the intent of that sentence or not?
No, because it says to ensure proper operation of the use. You know, that doesn't speak to the community.
No, it says the use will be adequately serviced by necessary public utilities and by community facilities and services.
Of a sufficient capacity to ensure proper operation of the use.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, use of the, on the property, not the community.
Well, it says the community facilities and services on I.
Right, right.
Now, I'm asking the question, does that refer to schools?
I think, I think what you need to do, though, I mean, I understand where Colless is coming from. Colless is talking about as a property, okay? In other words, services to the property. But I think what this addresses, and I think what Alan's point is, is this is a residential, the use is as what is there. What is there are families, there are children there. Is the community service, does it adequately fit in and serve? Does that serve the community? And does the community serve that? Do they...
Or do we have adequate, what it really comes down to, do we have adequate school facilities to take the children from this development?
I don't agree. I don't think that's what this is speaking to at all.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Because it starts out by saying the use. The use is a multifamily development.
Yeah.
Is it adequately served by utilities?
It's not only utility.
To ensure proper operation of it.
But it's not only utility.
It says, the operative words are "and" and "or" in these paragraphs.
Yeah.
And if it's an "and," that means you have to comply with all. If it's an "or," you have a choice.
Right.
Who wrote this?
I'm pretty up on English language. I'm with you.
Okay. And that's where, I just want to make sure that I get caught up in these "ands" and "ors" all day long.
I think it's deeper.
So...
It's a great point.
But anyways, that was my question. You have the floor again, Bill.
Well, I would, I would say that we have submitted the study by Fugier. And I think that if you read it, it relies upon New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority numbers, Southern New Hampshire planning numbers, and apartment projects of similar type and size. And Southern New Hampshire planning, New Hampshire Housing Finance, those are independent. No one at those institutions has an axe to grind in making numbers come out one way or another. And I think that those are numbers that can be relied upon. The school board is looking at the neighbor works project. The neighbor works project is one, I'm going to use the word rent-controlled or rent-restricted, and they're three-bedroom townhouses. Now, there's a huge difference between the child-age population, you're going to get out of a three-bedroom townhouse, and a one- or two-bedroom garden-style apartment. I mean, people aren't going to rent a three-bedroom unit unless they have or are thinking of having kids. I mean, that, you're obviously going to get many more children out of a three-bedroom apartment than you're going to get out of a one or a two. It's just logic.
Yeah, I think our own school impact fee study basically reaches the same conclusion.
Yes.
But Phil?
Well, I guess that goes back to the question that I raised a little earlier. Is this proposal in front of us part of the entire package? If it's entire, part of the entire package, I think what we need to do is look at the total impact. So I don't see how we can look at this portion and say what the project imposes, or that's the wrong word, but the impact of the project, and only take this portion and disregard the other. I think we need to look at the whole thing in total, because I think the facts bear that the impact, of what the impact is, the total impact, is a little different than what's being proposed.
Okay.
Or what's being represented.
All right, any other comments? I'd like to move on to number two.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
Just briefly. I like, I was trying to find my note, but I do remember the applicant making a statement that I asked a question, that this was not going to be workforce housing. This is going to be market apartment, market rate apartments.
That's correct.
I'm looking for my map notes, sir, because I know...
The first night he was here, he made that statement.
I asked him that directly.
You did, and if I may, provide the board with some additional information. I have developed both workforce or affordable housing, and I own and control about 400 units. And I've also developed about another 400 units of market-rate housing. I can give you actual numbers. In our affordable units that have three bedrooms and are rent-controlled, as Attorney Tucker pointed out, we have .46 kids per unit. In our market-rate housing with no three-bedroom units, we have .19 kids per unit. And those are our actual census counts as of today. So you can see that there's a significant difference between units that have three bedrooms and are rent-controlled versus market-rate units that are only two bedrooms in nature.
And Dick, say it again, and to make it absolutely clear as part of the record that these are market rent...
It's already in the record. I remember when he said it.
Yeah, it's in there. We'll put it in again.
Wait a minute. It's in the record.
It's there.
That's actually why the bike path is a very nice amenity going to the railhead, and that's Trailhead, and that's why I agreed to pay the Trailhead, because in market-rate units of two bedrooms, you have mostly singles, and there's a lot of bikers and walkers and that kind of thing. So to me, that's an amenity that helps the rental of the project versus being adverse to it. And that was one of the reasons that we agreed to that.
Number two, sir.
Number two, okay. This will use permit number two. The proposed plan is reasonable given the physical constraints of the development sites and/or access limitations. Well, we certainly do have an access limitation. Physical constraints are pretty clear. We've got a power line cutting across the property. We've got the brook and the conservation easement that we need, we need to stay out of. I think, you know, I recall back at our first meeting, we talked about what size buildings and how to locate them, and I think we've accommodated that and have a very nice plan. The use is specifically authorized by the ordinance as a conditional use. If completed as proposed, the development will comply with all requirements. Again, this is the same as above, and the answer to that is yes, it will, again, with the waivers. The use will be compatible with the neighborhood and with adjoining or abutting uses in the area. Again, we have the residential land on three sides, and on the back of the brook, on the other side of the brook, we do have more residential. We are a nice transition use of this property. And, you know, it really does need to be said, too, that it would be a million years from now before there's ever a commercial use put on this part of the property. And who would, what would you ever put there as a commercial use? I mean, to get anyone to, no one would ever do it, because there's no access to the public for, you've got no signage, no visibility, you know? Retail is location, location, visibility, visibility. You have none here. So even though it is zone commercial, never happen. The use will not have a substantial adverse impact on vehicular or pedestrian safety. Again, we've submitted a traffic study on that, which shows that to be the case. Use will not have a substantial adverse impact on the appearance or visual quality of the surrounding neighborhood. Again, these buildings will hardly be visible, if at all. The impact on that neighborhood, if you've driven down there, when you look up, all you see is the back of a Shaws store from a little further along. I was, I was actually surprised. I didn't think that view would be there. This will not have anywhere near that type of an impact, none at all, really. And the use will be adequately serviced by public utilities and by community facilities and services of sufficient capacity and sure proper operation of the use. Again, we feel that's the case. We have the utilities, and to the extent that that language does bring in the schools, we feel our impact on the schools is going to be very minimal.
Members of the board, any questions? Mr. Tucker? There was one question from the audience. Yes, sir. You can speak from there.
Okay. Yeah, Jason Sachs. I think Mr. Tucker's made some good points, that if you look at this portion of the property, I'd say residential, commercial, it does seem to make more sense as residential. But this is part of a mixed-use project. And in my mind, if the applicant wanted to make this residential and stay within the recommended 50% square footage limitation, the front half of the project should have been all commercial. And I wouldn't be here making this statement if that had been the case. So it just sounds like the applicant's coming in and saying, okay, well, we did have a plan to make it be even commercial, residential, but, you know, guess what? We need some more, because, you know, we just need to make the numbers work. Well, the time to make that statement would have been at the very beginning, when the project was presented as a whole. And to come in after the fact and say, we need more, and not even try to push commercial into this, at least in part, and make it maintain that, I just, I think it's a bad argument, and that decision should have been dealt with during the original project.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just so the numbers can be reflected, I did add up those footages. The commercial side of it is 36,180, and the residential side is 87,800. So it's almost a three-to-one ratio.
Correct, and that comes out to about 30 to 70% when you're...
I just did, I just added up the numbers off of the sheet here, Bill.
Yeah, I did, too. I got the same numbers you got. And then I, then I did the percentages.
Oh, well, that's good.
You guys are both math...
I didn't go that far.
We'll stop right there.
But it is about a three, it's almost a three-to-one ratio. Short of it.
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I just had a quick question.
Yes.
I was reading through the responses for the comments, and as of the 26th, you had not reviewed the traffic study. I mean, I'm assuming that that's been completed, the traffic study?
You mean Megan hadn't reviewed?
Megan hadn't reviewed? You've had a chance to review it, I'm sorry. Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to number three.
Do you want me to do this for you? Who's going to do this one?
Whoever. Do you want to keep on going?
I don't care. Have you want to steal anybody's thunder?
I'm sorry.
That's all right. You're doing well.
Yeah, keep on going.
Our next conditional use permit is to allow more than 12 units in a single building. And the qualifications or conditions that we need to satisfy are the proposed buildings are in scale with both the neighborhood and the town as a whole. We have some very big buildings in the Shaws and the Hanafords. And although they may not be as high, they are certainly much more massive. In addition, in the neighborhood and the town as a whole, in addition to the Timberwood projects, two others came quickly to mind for larger apartment-style buildings. One, the Edward J. Roy Apartments, which are on St. Anselm Drive. And the other is the Highwood Village, which has got to have four or five buildings of this size. I think those are 36 in a building, and there must be, what, four or five? Do everyone know where Highwood Village is, on St. Anselm Drive? Those are apartments, those are, those are much bigger than these. Those are apartments, those are, those are much bigger than these, I'm quite sure.
Understood that the, these, the size of these buildings is not new for this town.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you often see 36s and 30s as opposed to 24s. The use is specifically authorized in the ordinance as a conditional use. Clearly, it is. If completed as proposed, the development will comply with our requirements. Again, that's the case, provided we get the waivers. Use is compatible with the neighborhood and with adjoining or abutting uses in the area. We don't believe that going from 12 to 24 units is, is certainly incompatible, particularly because of the screening and, and the large buffers that we have. Use will not have a substantial adverse impact on vehicular or pedestrian safety. Again, going from 12 to 24 units certainly does not do so, and we have submitted the study. Use will, will not have a substantial adverse impact on the appearance of visible quality of the surrounding neighborhoods. Again, we are buffered, we're up on the plateau, hardly visible to anyone. And again, the use will be adequately serviced by necessary public utilities and by community facilities and services of sufficient capacity to ensure proper operation of the use. Going from 12 to 24 units in a building certainly doesn't put any more demand on, on any of the capacities. We have adequate utilities to, to service those.
Any comments? Members of the board? Any members of the public wish to comment on the size buildings? See none? Move on to number four.
So, finally, we have the conditional use permit for the directional sign, which I think everyone has seen a copy of. It'll be down at, at the base. And we will get that sign as part of the submission and, and the package. The use is specifically authorized in the ordinance as a conditional use. Yes, it is. If completed as proposed, will comply with all the requirements of the section and any conditions or standards. Again, it will. Use will be compatible with the neighborhood and with adjoining and abutting uses in the area. We think the sign, being of the size and, and scope and, and design that it is, certainly will be not, not be out of place. Use will have a, will not have a substantial impact on vehicular, pedestrian safety. Just the opposite, for anyone trying to find this place to visit or anything, it'll, it'll almost be a necessity. Use will not have a substantially adverse impact on the appearance of visual quality of the surrounding neighborhood. We think the sign is tastefully done and, and, you know, about as smart as you can have it and, and still be of use. And the use will be adequately serviced by necessary public utilities. I guess I'm going to say that I don't think this one really applies to a sign. And I think that covers the four conditional use permits.
Did we lose one in the shuffle here?
Nope, they're all there. I did four of them.
Well, I know, but what happened to G? Blank.
G is just a typo.
Was that supposed to be B, that the use is specifically authorized in the ordinance as a conditional use permit? That's not in that series of statements?
No, that's just a typo on my part.
Okay. I know it's getting late, but I'm, okay, so there's no G?
There is no G.
Okay. All right. I'll address number five, which is, I'm assuming that the staff comments are still relative to this project that have not been signed off by Brian or, or Megan, can be handled at staff level, and the board will feel comfortable with addressing it in that fashion without having to discuss it further? The remaining issues that are in the conditions of the approval that will let staff iron the wrinkles out?
Well, that's what I was just, was going to say, is that, you know, any remaining concerns are what you see as conditions of approval. So, you know, if approved, then we would, if approved conditionally, then we would take those conditions and make sure that they're taken care of prior to bringing the chairman for signature.
Mr. Tucker, do you wish to address any of the waivers? Or do you think those have been sufficiently addressed at the moment?
I think Nicole adequately addressed those.
Okay. Item eight is that a statement will have to be made as part of the motion for any approval of waivers. That's to the board members, that has nothing to do with the applicant. And number nine, the applicant has already stated he's wishing to help with the, to the tune of $8,000 towards the rail trail. And, and we've had a presentation by a member of the select board that, in the rail trail committee, that they would like to do that, that way. So... Are there any remaining issues that the board wishes to bring forward?
I have a question. This right here, just, who, who wrote this? Was this done, was this prepared by the town?
This was prepared by our.
Plan, okay. So, the, the only, and I, I have no problem with any of this, but as long as the applicant doesn't either. But this G, this three G does, I just would like those facilities and services over sufficient capacity to ensure proper operation, uh, community facilities and services. Could we either define those or remove them? So, they don't lock you into, or us into, having to build things that may not be on, that if we're under capacity, if we under, if, if we are under capacity to service. I just.
Well, can I address that?
Were you saying something like the sewer? If that was a utility that became, we didn't have the capacity?
Define community facility and services.
I think from colossus, it would be sewer and water and that kind of stuff?
No, I didn't, I, I think I'm sold on schools, yeah.
You're sold on schools, could it be police and fire also?
Yeah. Multiple impact fees come in, a lot of that is all impact fee related, though, John.
I, I just want to make sure that we either, if this is in here, and it's, and it's important that this is all followed, we either eliminate those words or make sure we understand the definition. So, nobody is compelled to have to.
Criteria?
Bring up to the standard.
You can't eliminate the word.
That's, that's something we can't eliminate from the actual part, the conditional use permit, because it's criteria that's specifically listed as required findings in the zoning ordinance that.
I understand.
The planning board has to make.
Would have to be taken out at a town meeting.
We would have to change the zoning ordinance.
The motion will have to be a motion to approve a conditional permit along with the items A through G of whatever's listed as part of those conditions, as part of that motion.
The only.
Or anything else anybody wishes to add to it.
Can you change your zoning record?
Yeah, right, I understand.
Can I add to that?
Yes.
Just to clarify, the G, sewer, sewer, we did meet with the sewer commission. Sewer commission has a little conflict in their regulation, not a really conflict, but they changed one part of their regulations regarding the billing. But they didn't change that, how they calculated the impact fee. So, on February 14th, they're meeting to discuss that. So, once we get that, we'll get our impact, we'll find out what our impact fee is. So, we have met with them. They were going to send a letter, a memo along, I don't know if they did, saying that they had no problem with this and that there was capacity in the, in the sewer line for this. As far as Manchester Water Works goes, I actually was out there for the flow test on this, and there's adequate flow out there. And they're, they are currently reviewing the plans for this, just to make sure, you know, the size that we specify is, is adequate for them and stuff. But there is enough capacity on that end. As far as electricity.
Right.
Met with the S and H already, telephone and cable. And as far as the school goes, I think Dick has given you the ratio numbers. And, you know, we do have that school impact fee. As far as police and fire goes, we, nothing was said about increased impact. Well, you have the fee, the impact fees anyways, but these were reviewed, these plans were reviewed by fire department and the police department as well. I think that covers.
I, I appreciate that, and I cer, and I, and I hope so. Because when they come and ask for more.
I think the thing that was pointed out was with respect to schools. And if you look at the Fugier study, and I have it in front of me, he points out that not all of the students that would be generated by this project would be going to the Bartlett School, and that there's sufficient capacity, and he, it's all in your report, at both the high school and the middle school level. So, if you were to take his impact, you're talking about three students to Bartlett. If you were to take the worst impact, you're talking about five or six students to Bartlett. So, what we're really conversing on as far as capacity is whether Bartlett can take three to six students, if you were to consider it in the context of the study, so.
And also, if you look at that study, prior years of attendance at Bartlett have shown higher numbers than what that would generate.
Right, so it's reviewing the data.
From this year, plus, you know, that number.
Enrollment has been relatively flat at Bartlett, while decreasing both at the middle and high school student capacity. And he got all of those numbers from the school department here, so. Just, I want to put it in context. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you. Ken?
And I stated earlier about the school, the school has, has challenged the Fugier study. I think it's up to the school to supply us with data to debunk their findings if they're going to challenge it. It's not up to us to, to go out and have them redo their study. It's up to the school board to bring data to us that will say, look, this, that study is not correct.
Actually, if I may, we got the superintendent's summary. And in response to that, Mr. Fugier already redid the study to address those comments. And I don't know, was this turned in to you yet?
I haven't gotten any revises.
But the, the answer to the question is always, is that we have multiple presentations from people of one course of action that seems to be similar.
Yeah.
And we have one dissimilar response, which is from the school district. In terms of what they think.
But that generates the exact same information.
And I have a tendency.
The difference is, we've got professionals relying on hard data, and then we've got school representatives saying they think it's going to create more than what the, the study showed. I mean, and those don't, those don't balance out to me.
They don't equate well, do they?
Not at all.
I'll tell you what, I'd be happy to do. I'd be happy, since we have 48 units, and if we're going to have 11 children or 18 children, I'd be happy to pay the school tax on just the children that we generate.
Oh, no, I'm not taking that one. I'm not taking that one.
That'd be considered a bribe, you can't do that.
You don't want to see the list of questions I sent to Brian earlier today, Dick.
You know, and also, what we heard from the school reps was, even one student is unacceptable, because we're maxed out. Well, if that's the case, then you might as well throw up a billing warrant or anything, because anything that generates additional population is going to create additional students.
I think it's, when, when you're confronted with it, you try to address it. They're trying to address it right now, and it's up to the taxpayers to determine whether they want to foot the bill.
Yeah, that's right.
So, be that it may. All right, now, now that we've been through all this, all these presentations, and the patience has been well-worn tonight, and I appreciate that from everybody. It's quarter of 11.
How about a bathroom break? I'm just kidding. Barber's at home voting, no. He's been sitting here for four hours. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Tim.
Should we entertain the thought of asking the applicant if they'd like to come back sooner than March the 8th? We only have one item on our agenda for the 23rd. If it would help move things along, that's what I would suggest we consider.
I would suggest that we've heard plenty of testimony from both the applicant, the public, and answering questions from the board. I think it's, if, if we want, if individuals here want to have considered all that information, then I would suggest that unless there's something absolutely crazy, we'd give abide to Nicole. So, she doesn't have to sit here or plan to be here on the 23rd when she's got other matters at hand. I would suggest that that, if, if the board desires that, I'm sure that there's somebody here could sit in that chair, in her chair, and answer any quick questions about the project that might come up, if that's the board's pleasure. I have no problem trying to get rid of the waivers tonight.
I'm not voting on anything tonight.
Yeah, I don't, I don't agree with that.
Oh, boy, okay. Then, that being the case, I'm not going to close the public hearing. But I will look for a motion to continue to a date certain. And, and, Brian, that if, 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 we're going to meet with the select board that night, that we set their time limit at 8:00. And then our meeting start at 7:00 to adjudicate this matter. Now, how does the board feel about something like that?
I think we can fit it all in on the 23rd.
I'd like to make a motion to move this, to continue this hearing to February 23rd, 2012.
Second.
With those.
Anything that you want to add on to the back end?
Okay, fine. Yes, Brian?
Could I just make a comment on that? I know that this discussion is, I don't know the word for it. It's very lively between all the members, and I don't, I honestly don't know if a discussion would be over in an hour. And I would hate to invite those people who had planned on making a presentation to do it after it. I don't, I don't know that it would be a problem for these people to come after their presentation. They planned on basically about a half an hour each.
What is, what is the presentation, Brian?
Well.
The other one. That's in Southern Hampshire Planning, what's it about?
The other presentations are basically, there's, there's two separate presentations. One is a fiscal cost analysis of the CTAP plan, which was a plan that I think previously the planning board has seen when Steve Griffin was here. I'm not sure if you recall it or not, but it's the community... Well, I can't remember the, the acronym for it, but it was basically a build-out scenario analysis of Goffstown that gave three different build-out possibilities. One is a base possibility, one is, you know, a, a middle one, and one is what the community wanted. And they, they, an engineering firm came and did a, a cost analysis of how much it would cost for us to build out at this level, how much it would cost for us to build out at this level, and the other level.
So, why can't we contact them, tell them they'll give them an hour? Limit their presentation to an hour?
Well, that's.
And move into this?
That's what I'm saying. And I, I think we start off doing those two presentations, and then, you know.
Let them know they've got a time.
We'll do this one right after.
Was that like the Community Technical Assistance Program?
Yes.
They had something to do with I-93.
That was where we had all the maps with the yellow dots, where they're going to put the new houses and all that pink stuff that.
Mr. Chairman, this information is, is, is vital, I would assume. Why do we need to have a presentation about it? Why can't they just give us the equipment, the packet, and we can look at it on our own? Why do they have to come here and talk to us about it? Because we're not going to make any decisions, we're just going to sit here and listen.
I think it just helps to have someone present it to us, so that it, it's clear and understandable what the goal, what the goal is. So, that's, that's the first presentation. The second one is, Southern Hampshire Planning Commission has, has recently finished completing their regional comprehensive plan, similar to what our town would have done as a town master plan. So, it's like the region's master plan. And they want to just present to us what their, what their plan is. And, you know, I think we were planning on basically 30 minutes per presentation, and, and that was going to be it.
Okay.
So.
8:00, 23rd, you're on.
I'm going to bring my.
And I have a hammer to take care of the selectmen when they're here.
Oh, and the selectmen are here just to listen?
So, you got a motion on the floor?
Or do we have to debate?
No, we have a motion, no second.
Talk about.
Yes, call a second.
Did you speak up? You're awful quiet over there.
I heard it.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
It made a dissonance.
Yes, you, you have the floor.
Mr. Chairman, before we adjourn.
We're not adjourned yet.
We got a motion on the floor to continue them.
Okay, I just want to make sure, I thought I heard a motion to adjourn.
No.
We have a, we have a.
Motion to continue.
If I may, just to clarify the additional information that the board has requested that we have not addressed. One was to verify densities, which Nicole and Brian will do. A second one. A second one was to understand what's left to be built in the phasing, if I understand that correctly, which we'll try and find out from the other applicants and present. And the third one was, um...
Other obligations remaining for two thousand and...
That was it, yeah. So, I wrote that one twice. So, those are the two outstanding pieces of information that we still owe the board.
Okay. What was the second one?
The first one was the, um...
Density.
Density count. The second one was any outstanding obligations that are still remaining from the previous applicants.
Approvals.
Right, on the approvals.
Might impact you.
Might impact you.
Understanding what's left in the phase.
The other one was, was phasing.
Oh, okay.
Is there any obligation to phase it?
Right, right, right.
Do it in a particular order or anything?
And Jeff Cavan will probably be here for that, and we just...
He likes coming here.
Jeff's all right, we like him.
Yeah. Well, you don't like me?
Don't put that in. Don't put that in a minute. It's, it's a motion on the floor in a second by Carlos. Hearing no further discussion, I'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much, I know it's been a long night.
That's okay. That's what we're here for.
And I do want to come.
I have a motion to adjourn, okay?
I just wanted members of the planning board to be aware that, I believe it was today, there was a public hearing scheduled up at the State House. There's a bill, a proposed bill to abolish the state planning commissions.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make, I'd like to make one last thing, if I could, please, before we go.
Who are they? I've never, I've never seen and heard of them, and I know them. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Not yet.
Second, Nick.
No.
Okay, I'm gonna give one speaker a chance, otherwise, let's be, get out of here.
This is actual, real business.
Okay, fine.
Does anybody know the approximate bond article for the school? For the, all the proposed articles, does it add up to something over eighteen million dollars?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to see, the committee here to know that when we approved the capital improvement program this year, my submission sheet from the school was for sixteen million one. Somehow, it's got to be two million greater than our official submission sheet. And I brought the copy with me, just for the record.
Right, just for the record, when the architect was here, uh, for the first part of the month, they told you that the two building projects were twelve point five million dollars.
I wasn't here for that meeting, unfortunately.
And that's in the record, right.
But I do know that this submission sheet for CIP was sixteen one, and it has now found its way to eighteen. So, I just wanna make sure that's on the record, right?
Yes, sir.
I, I just wanted you guys to do kind of a formal decision as far as the joint meeting thing. I don't know where it was that I read it, but I was reading that if a joint meeting is to be held, the board should formally vote on doing that joint meeting. Because the proposed, proposal is that it would be a joint meeting with the selectmen, and actually, Conservation Commission and the EDC are also being invited to it as well.
For what meeting?
For the next meeting.
Oh, now, this is getting out of hand. We're not, we're not gonna do it in an hour.
For the, for the proposals, that, or for the proposed presentations that they're talking about.
Anybody can be in the audience at any time to listen to a presentation. So, if the Conservation Commission wants to be here, if the EDC wants to be here, they'll be recognized and they'll be, have an opportunity to speak. And that's automatically granted.
And we're posting it as a joint meeting of any of those groups. If they show up, that's one thing, but I think...
It has to be posted, because they're in the same room together.
Right.
And there's a discussion of town business, so it has to be publicly known, so we're all three.
The selectmen felt that it was important to invite those groups because the, the CTAP, the CTAP project, Community Technical Assistance Program, definitely had scenarios that would be affected by following the more environmental way of developing versus the, the towns' build-out scenario. So, I, I think those groups should have a, and same for economic development. Those groups should have a say in, and be able to hear and participate in those presentations so that we can go forward with everybody on the same page when we do our planning. Because I'm envisioning we're gonna be starting up master plan process fairly soon. And this is good information to, for us to be able to consider as we move forward into that process.
Right, but remember, to amend the master plan requires some vote.
Yes.
So, I don't know, are we under some timeframe jurisdiction to update the master plan every so often?
We have to update it every ten years. We're into our sixth, no, we're into our, we're going on the seventh year. And to me, I would prefer to get it done in a longer drawn-out process where we can think about it and do it the right way, that everybody has a chance to participate in it. So, I'm envisioning maybe a couple of years to, to do that process.
Chapter by chapter? Chapter at a time, something like that?
I don't know, I, I would prefer, I mean, we, we do it a chapter at a time, but then, at the end, we adopt the whole thing.
Who's responsibility to change that, is it the planning board or a subcommittee?
It, it's actually the planning board.
Planning board.
Itself. They're the only ones that can vote and approve a change to the master plan.
But a, a subcommittee could debate it and bring questions and suggestions for it.
That, it has, that hasn't been the way it happened before.
Okay.
It's very public process.
Yeah, you, you wanna involve a lot of different people.
No, but you have a public notice, and you say that you're gonna have, want public input on a, a specific part or parts of the master plan, and it's, it's part of your regular scheduled meeting for a period, it might be nine months.
We've had public hearings in Penardville, we've had them up here.
Yeah.
And my recommendation would be that the planning board appoint the subcommittee to review and, and, you know, do the whole planning process. And each time, you know, a new chapter is reviewed and, and drafted, that that subcommittee be a part of the review process to, to go through and, and more fine-tooth comb, fine-tooth comb.
I prefer committees of two, assigned to a specific chapter, so everybody gets an opportunity to do some work on this thing.
But, well, no, I'm not saying that it just be subcommittees of the, of the planning board itself, but I'm saying we should invite members of the public to be part of a subcommittee that would be involved in the process.
We've done that in the past.
You can take that input to the planning board, and then you can make your decisions on that input.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I don't remember that, but if they did, that's, that would be fine.
I mean, you, you end up doing charrettes, and you end up doing big public meetings, and you do, you know, review with the subcommittee. And all of those recommendations from the subcommittee then come to the planning board, and the planning board makes their determination on what they wanna do.
It's one, eleven o'clock.
No, it's, it's one minute off. Any other business to come before the board?
I'd like the, I'd like the board to vote on this if you can.
I'm going to the Jim Raymond show.
Just to do the joint meeting.
I need a motion to vote on the joint meeting.
Is there a motion on the floor?
There was.
Yeah?
In a second?
I, I...
And a second to adjourn.
No, adjourn, but...
How can you make another motion when you already got one out?
It's easy.
Allen's rules? What are you gonna do, suspend the motion in a second?
I'm not gonna adjourn and then try to take another motion, because that'd be illegal too.
Who, who seconded the motion to adjourn?
I didn't second that motion. Motion to reconsider.
Carlos and you.
Carlos and you.
It's Carlos and you.
And who?
You.
Oh. No, he said I was too late, so that's why I thought he did it. If it's me, I would draw my second.
He's really punchy now.
I would draw my second.
Okay, let's start over again.
Okay.
We need a motion to, to invite the selectmen, Conservation Commission, Economic Development, and any other organization in town to a joint meeting on February twenty-third at seven P M.
So moved.
Second?
Am I voting? I'll second.
Yeah, you're voting first. It's the first vote we've had tonight.
Second.
Okay, any discussion of the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? He already left, yes. Okay, now I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, any discussion? Yes, aye. All those in favor say aye? Thank you.